So, welcome everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. And calling to order our city council briefing session. And the timestamp is six o'clock. Just for information in terms of the agenda for tonight as we have a pretty full briefing and presentation agenda tonight, it's probably going to take the full hour from six until seven. And likely after we finish that, we will then go into our regular city council session. And probably best if we were to take care of business and put the executive sessions at the end. So we will see how this progresses. I think that'd be the best thing for us in terms of our use of our time. So be able to get underway with our briefing session. And I will make some announcements in terms of what we normally say at the introduction, at the beginning of our city council meetings themselves. I just wanted to ask a quick question tonight. I have decided to not use my phone earbuds plugged in my computer. I'm using the speaker on my laptop. Is the sound acceptable all the way across? Very good. Okay, thank you. That saves me having those things sticking out of my ears. So, thanks very much. Okay, going into our work and briefing session. The first thing there would be for Mr. Hudman to discuss the consent items. So, Mr. Hudman, if you would take a place.
Mayor and council, tonight on your consent agenda, item four A are the minutes for the June 2nd, 2020 city council regular meeting. Item four B is a resolution supporting the submission of a grant application to the North Central Texas Council of Governments for dedicated bike lanes on Daniel Dale Road. And through the Transportation Alternatives Program funding with COG. We've submitted an application and this is a resolution of support for that. This project call includes off, on and off-road pedestrian and bicycle facilities, shared use paths and related pedestrian and bicycle safety countermeasures. So, the council had approved the addition of bicycle lanes along Daniel Dale. We felt that this would be a good project to take forward to COG for that, especially since it would connect with the city of Dallas and the city of DeSoto. This resolution then is a council support for that grant application. The total project cost is estimated to be just under $3 million. Our share would be a 20% match, which would be $659,789 if the grant is approved. And it would be paid for then using the bond money that was set aside for trails in the bond program.
Are you done with that, Mr. Hudman? I just want to make a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
It's, I think it's well to note in that paperwork that this discusses bike trails going all the way from I-35 to Clark Road. And so this is part of what I have seen going to the RTC, the Regional Transportation Council of the COG, that what they're calling the VeloWeb. And of course, that goes back to the old term of velocipede in terms of bicycle. So these bike trails going all the way from I-35 to Clark Road is really an important aspect of quality of life for our city and for our surrounding cities. It's going to connect Duncanville and DeSoto together. So it's really quite an important project and something that we would like to see in terms of those in our, all of our communities around here that like to use their bicycles. So I just wanted to interject that comment, Mr. Hudman.
Yes, sir. That's a good point to note also that being part of the larger VeloWeb, that helps with the grant application too because certainly those grants are looking at regional types of projects or how they fit into the regional effort.
Yes, okay.
Item four C is a resolution to authorize the purchase of audiovisual equipment from digital resources through a buy board contract. This continues our phased improvements for the council chambers in the briefing rooms as it relates to audiovisual equipment and in relation to our public access channel. So the funding comes from the PEG funds or what's called, called PEG funds, Public Education and Governmental Access Channels. And those are our franchise fees that are paid to us by the cable company. It is very limited in what it can be used for. And it can only be used for capital improvements that are related to the use of the government channel. So this, this phase of improvements would upgrade the capability to broadcast our presentations in the briefing room directly onto the channel, which we cannot do now. It is a video of the projector screen. It would also allow us to broadcast these kinds of meetings that are done as web video conferences. We would be able to broadcast directly on the cable channel. And it would also, we will also remove the projector and the screen in the briefing room, which you know, we've had issues with that in the past, but we would add, replace that with two 75-inch monitors. So that would also give the council as well as the audience in there a better perspective, better viewing angles. And that would also, there was also the ability to add a unified collaboration system, which essentially allows anyone bring in a separate device and to be able to connect to that system. So these funds are available in our PEG fund and this is through a buy board contract.
Very good.
And four D is a resolution approving terms and conditions of a project specific agreement with Dallas County for roadway striping. And this is for type B and type E roadways. We have the master agreement with Dallas County. So this is a project specific agreement that allows us to use their, their resources to stripe certain roads. Type B roadways are, are major thoroughfares that continue from Duncanville into other cities. And the county will share the cost of that striping with. Type E roadways are our local streets and we pay for the striping at 100% of, at the county's cost. We have used county in the past for this type of work and we recommend approval of that. Funds are allocated in the street maintenance budget for this. Item four E is a resolution adopting the Dallas County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan as amended. This is a 2020 amendment. You may recall, for those of you who were on council in 2016, council adopted the Dallas County Local Mitigation Strategy. And that was developed in 2015 and then we adopted it and became part of the overall county hazard mitigation action plan in 2016. In 2017, the council approved a resolution authorizing us to participate in an upgrade or an amendment or update of that plan. And this is the update, the culmination of that work. There are no substantial changes to the plan from the 2015 plan, but it is required to be updated every five years. So this is the five-year first update of that plan. And then item four F is a resolution authorizing assignment of an agreement for purchase of fuel from Eagle Oil to U.S. Venture. We have a contract with Martin Eagle Oil Company and that is through a Tarrant County Cooperative Contract. It was awarded in 2018 with three one-year renewals. We're actually in the third renewal of that contract until April of 2021. It was bought by another company called U.S. Oil. And U.S. Oil is honoring the contract pricing. So this is really an assignment of that contract from Martin Eagle to U.S. Oil. It does not change the pricing that we get under that contract. Those are all of the consent items on your agenda.
I have a question on that last item, Mr. Hudman. I was looking it over. If I read it correctly, it said that the petroleum company does not apply a markup to the fuel that we're purchasing. So I'm taking that to mean that it's spot market pricing in terms of how they get it? But we get it essentially at their cost? Did I read it correctly?
What it says is there's no change in the markup. And there is a markup shown on there for ultra-low sulfur diesel and for regular unleaded gasoline. But it is, it is spot market pricing, but there is a slight markup, but there's no change in that markup.
Okay, all right, understand. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, thank you very much. There's no questions on our consent agenda items. We will move on to the briefing and presentations. And as I mentioned earlier, I believe that this will take the entire hour because we have some very important things to, to go over in items, actually in item A. I think it's going to, it's very important that we do this because it's current and it's coming through with what we've, we've talked about at our last city council meeting in terms of approving the ILA and getting the money is flowing down from federal through state through county to ourselves. So with that, I'll go ahead and open it up to this Jessica James for her presentation. And this is to discuss potential options for utilizing Duncanville CARES Act funding. Ms. James.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. If you would, please put up my presentation. Thank you. As the mayor said, we're here tonight to review Duncanville, to review Duncanville CARES Act funding that we have received from Dallas County. I would also like to let you know, although I am presenting, Tia Pettis, the Assistant Director of Finance, and Tanya Hunter, the Regional Emergency Management Operations Coordinator, is also available to answer questions and will be providing input possibly throughout the entire presentation. Next slide, please. First of all, I'd like to start out with some background just for the audiences as well as reminding council what we've done to date. On May 11th, the state of Texas, as you all know, announced a distribution of state CARES Act funding. As part of the distribution formula, the cities within Dallas County are not eligible for state assistance. And so we're directed to work, to work directly with Dallas County. On May 19th, Dallas County Commissioners Court did approve an inter-local agreement and allocation of funding for cities in Dallas County. Duncanville's funding allocation was based on approximately $55 per capita based on 2019 population estimates. On June, June 2nd, as you know, you all approved unanimously approved an inter-local agreement between the city of Duncanville and Dallas County to accept the $2,173,050 worth of funding under the CARES Act for disaster relief assistance within our community. Next slide, please. Dallas's county, Dallas County's breakdown for Duncanville, funding breakdown for Duncanville is as follows. 20%, which equates to approximately $434,610 is available now to the city for utilization. And then an additional 80% will be available from Dallas County upon approval. And that equates to $1,738,440. So that brings us to our total amount that we have been funded of the $2,173,050. In addition, I would like to point out that with this award of funding, we also can use those, the money, 10% of it can be used towards administration cost of grants. So however, in terms of the administration for the program that council decides to, to use. Next slide, please. Going over some fun details with you. Payments from the fund may only be used to cover costs that aren't necessarily expenditures that occurred due to the pandemic and were not accounted for in recently, in recent CARES Act funding. In addition, funds were incurred or expenses had to be incurred during the period of March 1 through December 30. And we'll get into that further here in a few moments. But I do want to say that we are on a time crunch and, and time is of the essence. So all funds that's not used by December 30th, the city will have to pay back that unused portion. And actually Dallas County even wants us to report by December 11th on the funds that we anticipate that we will be paying back. So again, time is of the essence here. The city is accountable for all funds dispersed and will be audited in the future. Any funds unaccounted for will have to be paid back. We actually will have to be providing, we'll know more information tomorrow with further direction from the county, but we'll even have to be providing audits or information updates on a monthly basis. Next slide, please. The city may set up a program or programs that complement the counties, but they cannot, we cannot duplicate county efforts by providing assistance to the same persons or businesses. Dallas County will maintain a database of those receiving assistance directly from the county. And we are required to verify and ensure that we're not duplicating efforts for residents or businesses. The city may enlist assistance of a nonprofit or other organizations such as a third party. As many of you council members know, that's what Dallas County is in, in the city, that they're using a third party. Organizations providing assistance or support on the city's behalf should coordinate with Dallas County. And again, I can't stress that the importance of not duplicating efforts between the funds that are provided to us and what Dallas County is going to be offering. Next slide, please. Eligible expenses for how the funds can be utilized can include such things as payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, similar employees who services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID public health emergencies. Expenses from facilities in order to have them to deal with the public health measures for COVID. Any other COVID-related expense reasonably necessary to function to the function of government that satisfies the funds. Medical expenses, public health expenses, expenses associated with provisions of economic support. And again, that's, that's where really most of the programs that we'll talk about will come in. Next slide, please. So here are some proposed focus areas that staff is presenting to you tonight, council, for consideration and discussion. These areas of focus are in line with what other cities are offering. Obviously, it varies from city to city, but all these fit kind of under that umbrella. So there's three focus areas that we're recommending. First is to a direct response to mitigation expenses. Basically, working to make the city of Duncanville whole for the expenses that it has incurred to deal with COVID. And you can see those bullet points underneath those, what we would, what could be covered underneath there. Again, public safety, emergency medical expenses, personal protective equipment, cleaning, disinfectant supplies and services, and retrofitting facilities for COVID-19. On the residential assistance, some of the money we would recommend could possibly be used for such things as rent, mortgage, lease payments, utilities, water bill, car payment, possibly food. Obviously, that's always a big concern in a crisis situation. However, in, in this type of situation, because it can only be used for COVID-related, for the COVID-related situation, it does become more difficult to verify compliance because you have to ensure that the funds spent on food are actually going to those that have been impacted by COVID. Medical, again, it must be related to COVID-19. It can't be for your everyday expenses, the medical expenses that an individual might incur on a daily basis. Business assistance, possibly for payroll, inventory, utilities, retrofitting businesses for COVID-19 in, in order to serve their public better, potentially lease or mortgage payments. And then other, if council had some other ideas. So we'll get into these a little bit further and get some more direction from council. But right now, these, looking at the funds and how they can be used and in reviewing the different areas and need for our community, these are the, the three main areas of focus that we would recommend. Next slide, please. Here's an option on how funding could be utilized to assist our community. We would recommend 20, the 20% that is available now, we would recommend that that would be used to mitigate city expenses. Again, and we talked about what those expenses were on the previous slide. 40% towards business assistance, that equates to approximately $869,220. And, and then also 40%, which makes up that total 80, to residents or residential assistance. Again, I want to stress that 10% of it can be used towards administration of grants, which is going to be critical with this large amount of money that's going to need to be allocated and dispersed throughout our community. Next slide, please. So now that we've talked about possibly, so some potential uses in order to maximize the funds to make the most impact for our residents and businesses in the community, we need to look at realistically how these funds are going to be administered and really what are logical options in terms of administering them. Now, I know that the EDC, obviously, we're, we have the, the business program that they had approved and we had moved forward with, but this is substantially a larger amount of money to administer. So really, in terms of, of thinking about the, the timeliness of it as well as the reporting requirements that Dallas County is going to have on us, these are the two options that are realistic for the city to disperse the funds. One would be to hire a third party to administer all funds. That would be residential and business. Oh, we have met and had a preliminary conference call with the third party that the city of Dallas is going to use to see what they had to offer and if they would be willing to work with us if, if they could handle our needs as well. And they definitely, they can do everything from a portion of it to a turnkey operation for us. And they have the expertise and the manpower and the bandwidth to be able to do that. In addition, they do have the software as well that can tie in and do that checking for duplication of the efforts that we talked about earlier with Dallas County as well. And so they will, they already have that relationship established with them. The other option, which is important when you think about dealing with our residents and, and really making that connection with the community, is to hire a third party to administer the business assistance, as we talked about, and then possibly partner with a nonprofit to administer or co-administer the residence assistance with the third party. After looking at all the different options, and you can see those on the screen, we met with Duncanville Outreach Ministries. And we do recommend that that, if, if council decided to go that direction, that they would be a good fit for that. They do already, they are already established within the community. They do have that rapport. They do have that experience in terms of assisting residents within the community with the different services that we listed above, maybe not all of them, but most of them. The challenge that they have and the reason why we would not recommend going solely with a nonprofit is, in their cases, they don't have the bandwidth. Obviously, their employees, their number of employees are limited. But I want to point out to you again that we talked about earlier that 10% of that, that funding can be used to assist with the administration of these grants. So they have, Duncanville Outreach Ministries has the expertise in terms of case management, meeting with the client, being able to identify what their needs are, what's the best use of their funds, making sure that they get all the assistance that they can and point it into the right direction that they need. Whereas the third party that we spoke with has the expertise to, to be able to verify the information, to actually process those applications and to ensure that we are compliant with funding distribution as well as reporting efforts to Dallas County. So we really feel like that that would be a great partnership. Again, Duncanville Outreach Ministries would be our, our face of our program, but they would work hand in hand with the third party. The third party, they would have access to be able to have the staff that they needed that would be trained to input the information into the third party system. And then again, to help with the intake and managing of, of the different clients' needs. So we really, we, Duncanville Outreach, when we met with them, they were very interested. They want a partnership. You know, we obviously did not commit to anything or an amount of funding by any means, but they really are interested and want to continue to be part of helping the community. So we feel like that would be a, a good partnership, a win-win for everybody. Next slide, please. So the next steps, really what we're asking from council tonight is we need some direction in terms of how council would like to utilize the funds, what type of programs that you all would like, some qualifications for those programs, and then the administration of the, of the funds as we talked about earlier. So again, what we'd like to ask first, and we'll just kind of go through a check list if that's okay with council. First of all, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. But what we're proposing, again, to recap what I said earlier, in terms of the, the amount of money that we were awarded, Duncanville was awarded, would be to put 20% towards the city to help make them whole from the, to mitigate the COVID-19 expenses. 40% to residential assistance and 40% to business assistance. Any thoughts or, or comments on that?
Councilmember Cooks does have his hand raised.
Yeah, Jessica, let me go back. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Let's go back for just a second. You mentioned that we would have to pay it back if we didn't use it. It's not really paying it back. Is it? Help me clarification. Is it just returning it or, or paying it back? Or that's just words? How you, how you really state?
It's essentially words. If, if they will be providing us the funding, if we don't use it, we have to refund that money.
Okay, we're done. Good, thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
On the mechanics of the 80%, I know that the 20% is coming to us pretty quickly. And from what we see here, that, that's anticipated that that total of 434,000, 435, basically, is essentially needed to cover what we have already spent or are going to spend very quickly. The mechanics of dispersing the 80%, not real clear in terms of how the county is going to be getting that to us. If we decide to go ahead and allocate any $870,000 for business assistance, do we distribute that from monies that we have and then apply for reimbursement from the county as part of that 80% coming back at a later date? Or how do we get that $870,000 for both of the residential and business assistance coming to us? We certainly can't just take it out of whatever funds that we have from our, from our fund balances to do that. And we can't wait until December or after December to get the money back. So are we clear yet on the mechanics of how that money will be coming to us, how we use it on that 80%?
We'll have more clarification tomorrow, mayor, but what I can tell you is what they are going to request is for us to put, council to put together essentially a program. If you did, let's say you went this direction, residential and business, that you would put together a program. We would present that to Dallas County. Once they approved the program, then we would be awarded the funding. Once they approved the program, then we would be awarded the funding. And so we would be in charge of managing those funds accordingly. And Tia, please, again, feel free to jump in there, or Kevin, if you have any other further comments on that. We, but at this point, we don't know all the specifics, but we do know that we have to get that approved, and then we will be awarded the 80% once it's approved, and then we will be dispersing the funds accordingly after that.
Yeah, so the key is that it's not going to be on a reimbursable basis. It is distribution of the funds coming to us.
That's right.
And that was what was important in my mind, that we didn't have to lay it out and then get the money back on those 80% allocations. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So let me, I know you're asking for directions, and I guess I don't want to be all over the. No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you said 10% goes to administration. Okay, so is each area, like 10% from the business assistant, 10% from residential assistant, 10% towards the city? Or is it, are we going to take it out of the total amount? And then redivide the 20, 40, 40?
Yes, ma'am. So we would not look for, I mean, obviously, any administration costs that the city would incur, would be involved with that 20%. It's 10% of the funds that, of the remaining balance. So if we looked at the, let's say that we looked at the 80%, we would look at 10% of that could be applied towards administration. So obviously, we do have some administration costs, but we would not take that out. That would be part of our 20%. We would not take that out of, the 80% by any means. But yes, there would be 10%. So let's say that we split that, and, because it's overall 10%. And so we could apply that towards both the residential and the business assistance.
So we're taking it out of the 80%? And I guess, you know, I'm not clear what you want us to vote on, because we really, you know, when you look at like residential assistance, Duncanville Outreach has never had this kind of money to disperse. So that's kind of overwhelming, and I realize we have a third party, but the third party is making sure that what the money is allocated for meets their criteria, not really handing it out, so.
Yes, ma'am, and that's where we would work with the third party to provide staff to assist Duncanville Outreach with that expertise, because you're exactly right. They're used to doing assistance, but not on this volume. We can move forward, we, this is just one point for discussion and guidance from council tonight. We can move forward into the other items that go along with this, if council would like.
Well, I guess, what do you want us to approve? Because, you know, the breakdown is probably okay, but as far as the administration of it, I think we already decided that we absolutely needed the third party. And then when you get down to looking at the, you know, the city's taken care of, you've got a whole staff, but when you look at the residential assistance or the business assistance, I think we need to talk about how we want that to go, because of the amount of money, it's a tremendous amount, more so than like the economic development committees worked with or Duncanville Outreach has worked with.
And Councilmember James, and that's kind of what the question is, is this, is this breakdown of percentages an even split between business and residential? Is that what y'all want to do? Do you want to do something different, you know, change those percentages one way or the other? So that's, that's really what we're looking for at this point, is if you're in agreement with that split, or if you want to change that, that's what we're asking.
Oh, okay, so you're just talking about the percentages, not how it's gonna work?
Correct, yes. I mean, if you want to, if you're, if you're okay with an even split between residential and business, then that's kind of what we're proposing. But if you think it needs to be geared more towards one side or the other, that's what we're asking for input as well, so.
I don't know, it might, maybe businesses maybe have been more affected. I don't know.
So I do, I do have comments, so that's why I was gonna ask, did you, how do you want to, how do you want to address this? Are we talking overall, or do you want to hit one second at this at a time? Meaning, are we gonna talk about the third party, or who's gonna handle it? Or we're gonna go, start going and diving into the 40% each part of it? So how are we, how are we going to address this? Because I do have other questions on the 40%.
So maybe it would be better for us to go to the next questions and kind of look at each program a little bit more in-depth to see what kinds of assistance you're looking at, and maybe that will help you decide, come back to this question, after you talk through some of the, some of those other, the other things on what kinds of assistance are you willing to do? That might actually help you formulate a decision on how much to allocate to each spot.
And if we'll just take in consideration, when you talk about the 10% that could be used, then that 10% with the company who's taking care of it, if they don't take care of the full thing, then they're taking 5%. So we need to look at how that, if that 10% is only for the whole 80%, but you have two companies. So when we come back to this, I want to kind of talk about that a little bit more.
The ILA allows up to 10% to be used for administrative purposes, so it's not gonna be necessarily that flat 10%, and it's not necessarily gonna be the 10% to one business. So if we go, if the council supports the idea of partnering with the Duncanville Outreach Ministry, and we would want to be able to reimburse them for their administration, administrative oversight over their portion, and then the other business that's handling the paperwork side of it would be reimbursed for that. So it would be very much dependent upon what the scope of work is that we engage in with each entity.
Okay, thank you.
But that third party that we talked about, that company had already been agreed on, had it not, with Dallas County? They already had someone, and we were talking about that we were gonna use them.
Yes, ma'am. Dallas County has engaged the same firm that the City of Dallas is using, that just occurred to. And so it's our recommendation that we also engage them just for simplicity in administering it and ensuring that we don't have that concern, that issue of duplicating funding, because if we do, that's a violation of the ILA and I'll come back for that money.
And so what percentage do they charge?
I don't know what it was. It was, from one of the, or maybe Tia knows, but I don't know for sure. It was under the 10%.
Yes, in our preliminary talks, it was roughly 7%, and then some other additional costs, and that's in terms of the turnkey from start to finish. So if we are in fact partnering on the residential with the outreach, we were not provided a quote on that, but of course, we would assume it would be less than that percentage.
So 7% plus some added charges for other?
Right, they roughly, it was about $13,000 in terms of software, getting the application up and going, so that was the additional. And again, these were very preliminary estimates that we were provided.
Wow, so that's aiding up the 10% pretty well.
Well, in terms of, of course, looking on the business assistance side, that would. But if we are in fact partnering with the outreach, as I said, it's going to be less than that 7%. We haven't determined what that would be, since they would not be fully administering the program under the residential assistance, that of course, we've got to assume that's less. We don't know what that number is, but still, as Jessica and Kevin already pointed out, we are looking to also support, if we are to go with the outreach partnership with this third party, we're looking to definitely reimburse their administrative expenses also for the outreach.
Right, I would, I don't know, but I would think there might be more people in residential, but the amounts might be smaller in business, fewer people with larger amounts. I don't know, but I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about an even split 40, 40, so.
Well, I had a question about that, and I know it may be going forward, but I know that Jessica said that we have to present a program to the county, and this is what we're looking at, is the 20, 40, and 40 for something for the county to approve to get in these monies flowing. Are those percentages dynamic? I mean, as it progresses, we see how the money is being requested and how it's being used, are we able to change this, these percentage allocations as this happens? Are they static or dynamic, I guess? So it's kind of important to know how the county is going to hold us to these percentages, or are we allowed to have some flexibility? You know that, Mr. Hugman?
That's a good question, Mayor, and so what you could do is you could, we could provide a, or provide the information on a program that you could allocate up to 40%. If, say, you would decide to go with these percentages, for example, you could, we could put in place a program that would allocate up to 40% for business assistance and up to 40% for residential assistance. But you could also put in, you know, with, the city creates the program, so it's maybe what the council would prefer to do then, is step back from that full amount and start out with a smaller amount, like a phase one in both programs, and see what the need is, how it goes. So you're keeping some in reserve under each of those categories, and you may want to change those categories, and say you see more need in the business side than in the residential, and you, so you want to take some of that reserve money out of the residential side and apply it to the business. I think it would just be going back to the Dallas County and making that amended change in the program.
So the county is just looking from something, for something from us that says, we got a pretty good idea how we want to use this, and there's a possibility it can change as we roll on, but here's how we want to see it initially. And that's all they're looking for, I think, is some kind of paperwork from us that says what we, that we've put some thought to it, and here's what we think we're gonna do at the outset. But with the possibility, as you said, with the up to factor built into these things, then that gives us flexibility to move around as we progress through. I had another.
Through that with the county. It's not real clear yet on what they're expecting. I mean, they're still in early stages also. I think they're feeling their way through it also.
Another question, I guess this is for Tia, since she had the discussions with the third party. Going back one chart to Chart 9, it talks about using two third-party vendors, but I'm wondering, are those two bullets, those two third-party vendors, are they actually the same third-party vendor that would do it for us?
That is correct, Mayor. We actually only met with one, one company regarding that, and they indicated that they would be able to handle both the business and residential side. So that actually would be the same, both of those bullets are referring to the same third party.
I had a feeling that's what it was, but I wanted to make sure that we could go ahead with this third-party who does, is doing the administration for Dallas, that we could actually turn the thing over to them for turnkey, and then the administrative cost could be very well accounted for when it comes time to do an audit, which is going to come, and we know that, so.
Yes, that would, that would be the ideal, ideal process, and as you said, the auditing piece absolutely will come, and will definitely be audited for our external auditors under a single audit this year, since it'll exceed, will exceed funding in $750,000. So that automatically sets in a single audit for us, as well as we're subject to audit through the county for up to several, up to four years.
So using that one vendor for the turnkey administration and distribution, and for interfacing with county and the City of Dallas and how it goes, the invoices that we receive from them, I'm presuming it probably would be on a monthly basis, provides us with a very substantial piece of paperwork when the audit comes, rather than trying to track our individual accounts and ledger entries. So it's much better for us, I believe, in terms of being able to account for every penny when it's paid on an invoice, rather than us trying to document, this is what we did on an hourly basis with staff or something like that.
Absolutely.
And Mayor, one thing that I would like to point out too, is that we would not recommend, and that was that second bullet point, we would not recommend that Duncanville Outreach would be considered for the business component, since that's not their area of expertise. So we would definitely, if you went with the second option, we would definitely recommend that we have that third-party handle the turnkey for the business, and then just partner with Duncanville Outreach.
That's basically what I was assuming with the discussion, Jessica.
Ken, let's go to the next slide, Tracy. Thank you. So this is what we discussed earlier in terms of, we want to see if, in terms of what decisions on this slide that were, or direction we're asking for, we want to see if council is okay with the proposed areas of assistance that you see there to the left of the screen in terms of rent, mortgage utilities, water, car payment, so forth. And then if, if yes, okay, then we'll move to the qualifications. If not, what would you all like to see? And then if you're good with that, then we would look at some proposed qualifications, and this is just a place to start with for you all. You can see those on the right side of the screen. So we would recommend for the residential that it would be capped at $2,000 per household based on the address of the dwelling. And the reason why is that when we met with Duncanville Outreach, with their history and their experience, they've said that, you know, typically between rental and mortgage payments, they run between $1,300 and $2,000. And so that would allow them possibly, an individual to have possibly either one mortgage or lease or rent payment paid. If they had any extra, then again, Duncanville Outreach would work that case management to find out what their other needs are. We also recommend that they must prove that they were a Duncanville resident prior to March 14th. They, this is, they must prove that they were negatively impacted by COVID in terms of a loss of wages or additional expenses incurred. Now, I know that it's, the City of Dallas has went slightly in a, in a different direction in the county in terms of, they're not necessarily looking at whether they were negatively impacted from COVID per se. They're basing it more on an income requirement, whereas this would allow for possibly all levels of income if they were impacted. So if you were above the median household income and you, maybe you've lost your job or you were furloughed or what have you, framing it this way would allow us to assist those needs as well, because even if you did have a good paying job, it doesn't mean that if you're furloughed that you still don't need assistance. Not currently receiving state assistance, not related to COVID-19. And so those individuals who are potentially on assistance programs right now, maybe like welfare, Medicaid, or something like that, expenses must have, again, been incurred between March, and this is where we'd want direction from council to May, or would you prefer to December? And again, I do want to let you know that, you know, that November, December time period is very critical, because, just to remind you, by December 11th, we have to know essentially how much funds we have to let Dallas County know that we're gonna be potentially reimbursing them for. Applicant cannot receive duplicate assistance for the same expense from another source, including Dallas County. Assistance will be paid straight to the vendor. This was something else that we really liked about Duncanville Outreach, is that they, they pay the vendor directly. They do not give the money to, to an individual. So it's ensured that those funds are. So it's ensured that those funds are put or allocated, um, where they were requested. And then other, um, do we want to, you know, is there something else that you all would prefer in terms of a qualification or a requirement? And then do we want to allocate an amount for food? Again, as I talked about earlier, it is more difficult, um, that, uh, Duncanville Outreach, when we met with them, had, had said that their food requests weren't as great as what they had anticipated, but they do believe that simply because residents are potentially getting, um, food in other places that, that are, they don't have to be verified, they can just kind of drive through and get food assistance. Um, but if the council wanted to do that, we could put a, a lump sum, uh, towards food allocation. So what we're looking for from, from you all direction on this slide is if, if you're happy with the residential proposed assistance that we have listed, or what changes you would like to see, and then what your thoughts are on the qualifications or the requirements to, uh, receive assistance. And so on this slide, this is kind of the direction we're looking for.
Well, I like the, I like the part that you have here for the residential assistance. Uh, you're right, I totally agree, and having some experience working with the urbanly. Uh, on the food piece, it will be very difficult to administer the food piece, uh, and even based upon what, what the other nonprofits just mentioned. But my question is, also kind of goes into the line of education, and that is if a person was, had to drop out of their secondary education such as college and not being able to now take their, a class, because having to do utilities, meaning they couldn't do internet or whatever else, could education be a part of this as well at all, and is it that, you think that will fit into this piece of, of, of assistance?
Um, looking back under what the requirements were, Councilmember Cooks, I don't, I don't know that it would. Uh, Mr. Hugman, do you have any input on that? Looking at if you, if we could, uh, go back to slide six, please. So these are the eligible expenses that, uh, we've been provided direction on. And so I, I don't know exactly how that would fit. Now, if there were expenses that maybe were incurred, I don't know, I'd have to get some direction on that. Mr. Hugman, what, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Cooks, I don't know. I mean, I, I think that's a good question. We don't know. We probably would just have to go to the county and ask them. It might fall under that last bullet. So expenses associated with economic support. We would just have to go and ask them if that would, would, uh, work or not. I don't know of anyone that is, put that into their, their requirements or their types of assistance.
Thank you.
Something the council would like to, to look at, then, then we will go and find out and ask the question.
Sure.
All of the others asking, I thought that if we, uh, if there, if anyone's able to help themselves through education, it will allow them to better improve themselves over, over time as well, so, but just finding out. Anyway, go ahead.
One of, one of the possibilities of answering that question though, Mr. Cooks, is looking at the actual CARES Act itself in terms of what the eligible expenses are, and those were identified enumerated, uh, pretty clearly in the TDEM. I know that we're not working with that, with the TDEM, our money's coming from a different source, but the TDEM pretty well delineated what the CARES Act permitted the use of those funds for. And while it's been, you know, a couple of weeks, couple, three, four weeks since I've read that document, I don't recall seeing anything in there about education. Uh, it was, it was, it just didn't cover that. It was more economic support in terms of directly, what did you have to do that where the pandemic affected you personally and your personal expenses. Uh, but there again, uh, the, I'm not saying, uh, without any equivocation that it can't be, but let's go ahead and, I think, Mr. Hugman, make a note. The councils, it's, it's a good question, but let's get an answer to it, I guess, uh, either from the county or looking at the CARES Act itself, or maybe asking TML for some specificity in terms of what we can do with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Just not real sure.
Can we please forward back to slide eleven? Thank you.
Um, I've got a question about the, the timeframe. Does it have to be May or December? Cause we don't know how long this is going to last. In terms of looking at what's happening in Dallas County with the new cases and new hospitalizations, you know, we're setting a new record for a stable peak, um, almost daily now. And it, it's hard for me personally to, to put a, a stop on, on whether it's May or December, not knowing how far this thing is going to go. I think May is definitely too early. I mean, here we are, we're already into June. Uh, and there's a good strong possibility this could continue into July based on what's happening here in Dallas County. Of course, we don't know what the governor's going to do either, in terms of his emergency disaster, uh, proclamations, but.
Mayor, we would recommend by, by December first, because we do have to report back to, and, and that would be the latest because, since we do have to report back to Dallas County. On the eleventh, uh, that December first would be, you know, a, a good end date to ensure that, that we know where we are and that we're able to get all those, um, uh, cases that have been open, managed and, and closed and assisted. So that's just up to you in terms of what you all are comfortable with.
I'm not comfortable, I'm, Jessica, I'm not comfortable with that, because that only gives ten business days to, to put that together, and that's, I don't think that's enough.
Oh, neither.
You know, I think y'all are going to need, you and, and our third-party administrator are going to be more than ten business days to, to put that information together, so maybe we should look at like November fifteenth, or something like that.
Okay, so November fifteenth?
Or November first.
Or November, I was just going to say, or maybe even November first. I haven't looked at the calendar and find out what it is, but probably, this is, you know, we're, we're accounting for penny by penny by penny. And that thing hanging over me, I'm deeply concerned about when it comes to that audit. We just got to come out clean. And so the ample amount of time that we can give Tia, and working with the third-party administrator to make sure this money comes out by the penny, I'd like to give him an ample time to do that, so, yeah, I, I'd more opt for the, for November first than anything. What do you all think?
November first.
Mayor Pro Tim McBurnett has his hand up.
Thank you. Mayor, in fact, that's what I had down in my notes. I was going to target November. But the third-party administering, I should say, should be tracking this as going along as well. But I, but I think November's a good time to, to set.
Yeah, you know, one of the unknowns is, we don't know what this paperwork's going to look like in terms of submitting it to the county for reconciliation.
Right.
It could be a monster, or it could be very simple, we don't know. But even if, even if that third-party administrator has it locked down penny by penny, and even if it's on in the Excel spreadsheet all the way lined out, we've still got to put it on some kind of form that we don't even know about yet, and put our names on it. So, yeah, I'm okay with the first of November, if, if we have some consensus there.
I'm agreeing with November.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with November.
Okay, so, see, okay, let's, Jessica, let's, let's call it November first for, for that, uh, for that deadline, I think, and that'll be, it gives us a safety net in terms of getting everything done that we have to do.
Yes, sir. Can we talk about, um, Ida, the first bullet point and, and get your input on that in terms of the, um, capped amount at two thousand, if coun, council's comfortable with that, or if they would do like a, or would like to do a lesser or a more?
For me, it's kind of hard to say right now. I mean, I think you capped it for some reason for two thousand based upon the information you gathered, and since we're on a short window of getting this back, I just think we start where you've already started in, with the opportunity to go back and look at this again at, at some point as well. I mean, we're, it sounds like we're, we're crunched to get this in.
Yes, sir.
Jessica, you mentioned that that two thousand dollars comes from an average amount from what the Duncanville Outreach Min, uh, Ministry is working with. Is, did that average was, was it a rolling average over a couple of months, or is it just what one person or one household asks for, and then they go away?
No, they're only, um, they only provide, um, assistance, um, like this one time of, one time of year. For this type of assistance now, it would, you know, obviously, even though they only provide it once, they have, most of times when they get a client in, they'll have multiple needs. And so even though it's once a year, they do have typically multiple needs, and so that's where that amount came from.
I'll go back to Mark's question, do we have to lock this one down tonight?
I don't know that you do. The only thing is, is we would work to put together a program and come back to you in July. And so the, the more things that we can work out ahead of time, the clearer the program would be that we could present to you, but that would be something that we could put in there, this value now, and you could change it in July when you maybe had time to think about it more, if you would like. You could change it at any time, that's completely up to you, sir.
Okay, yeah, I, I feel better about that. I just don't, I, it, I'm not, I don't know whether to increase it or decrease it, to be honest. I mean, it looks like a good number, but I'm not real clear on where we're, on how Duncanville Outreach Ministry is using that number. Of course, that, that's for internal use of them, but I'm not so sure with the monies that we have in terms of helping our residents.
And remember, they've got to bring this back to COVID nineteen.
Yeah.
It can't, it can't just be because.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, and that would be something, and that's why this partnership again would be critical, important, because when we spoke with Duncanville Outreach, that they would, um, whoever the partner, they would have specific staff that just handled the COVID nineteen-related cases. Those clients that were impacted due to COVID nineteen, they're, they're, um, usual or they're, they're regular clients that need assistance that maybe aren't due to this. They would process those and, um, uh, manage those separately. Uh, a, a separate person would do that, so that we could definitely maintain that separation of COVID versus just needing regular assistance.
You, you know, the only thing that scares me on some of this, and we don't have, uh, all the information yet, for sure, but some residents have, have already used that assistance that are existing mortgage companies. And so I'm wondering, are they then come ineligible because they have used their mortgage company already with the program that they use? I don't know, we can't answer that tonight, but that's something we need to take into consideration, because if, if they come back later and say, because you used it with your mortgage company, now you can't, you're not qualified for these, uh, funds, uh, again, we're, we're up against the brick wall, so I hope they would provide us with more information.
Yeah, and they set the prerequisites for what the money can be used for, it's not us, so, you know, people do what they have to do to stay afloat, and if they, they did it in advance, then there's nothing we can do if it doesn't qualify.
Correct, but good money.
It goes to that third bullet too, Mark. You know, we're, we're, what's been proposed here is that you can't get duplicate assistance for the same expense from another source. I mean, that's like any other source whatsoever, which would include your mortgage company.
Yeah.
And tha, and that can be changed if, if you all would, um, like to alter that by all means. We, we can tweak that however you would prefer.
I don't think you can change that from what I understand, when it's a prerequisite from yes, given the money.
In the ILA, the requirement is that we cannot duplicate, uh, assistance through the CARES Act funding that Dallas County might. Uh, but some cities, I think the city of Dallas, I believe, had put a requirement in that, that, uh, for residential assistance that they could not have already received, or I guess it's on the business assistance program, that they had not already received, uh, funding through like the PPP. But that, that's a discretionary thing, so it's the same thing with this. You, you can't, we can't duplicate using the same source of funds to CARES Act to the same recipient. But if you wanted to put in other things in, in place, or not, that's up to y'all, and that's what we were asking there. So that, again, maybe something you want to think about, and as you, when this comes back to you for approval, and you see it in writing, then you may want to tweak that or change that at that point.
And, and by the way, erase that comment, take back that comment that I just made about the mortgage. If, if some have already asked for assistance from their mortgage, because it's not like they give them the money, they gave them the money, they just put it on the end of the note. So disregard that statement, because it's, they didn't get hit. The only help they got was, is to remove it three months out. So it's not like they, they received help money-wise. So I know we'll look at that later, but I wanted to clear that up now that I'm thinking about it.
Yeah, I, I get that. I see what you're saying. It's just, all it is is a deferred payment rather than a forgiveness of payment. So, yeah, that, that's a good point, okay.
Well, then what I'm hearing then is that you all within, uh, of putting the November first date in there, that, that you all are okay with these, um, qualifications as a, as a starting point? Were, were there any other additions that you wanted to add in there that's not on the list?
No, I think we have to reevaluate as it starts going.
It'll be a live document.
Yeah, we, I mean, we just have to know where the areas of, of, uh, a problem are. We don't know.
Yeah, a key point you made too, John, it is that it has to be documented that the assistance is necessary for COVID-related. And that's, that puts quite a burden of proof on the, on the applicant. And, and it's a good thing, uh, uh, that's a good thing, so that, that, that cap in terms of the two thousand dollars could be quite adequate, uh, with the application that has to come in in terms of proving that the expenses were exactly COVID-related. And that's where we have to leave it. So I think probably we're, we're okay with what we've got here.
All right, then let's move on. Uh, next slide, please. So this is, uh, for the business assistance. A number of these are modeled similarly to the, the DCEDCs, but again, um, also with what other cities are doing. Those on the left side, again, are the items that we would suggest council consider that these funds could be used, uh, towards, uh, in terms of payroll inventory, those type things. Uh, what we would be looking for the, in terms of proposed qualifications or requirements is if there's a grant amount that council is comfortable with. One thing that we, we've learned some lessons during the DCEDC program, and one of the things that, that we've learned, and, and this is consistent with other, um, organizations, is businesses typically are going to request the max amount. So you might think about just putting whatever that limit is on there that you're comfortable with to begin with. So, because that's typically what they're going to ask for. Also, uh, the DCEDC said that they had to be in business, uh, basically a hundred and twenty days prior to the county order, so that's approximately November fourteenth. They must prove that they were negatively impacted by COVID, um, such as a loss of revenue. That was one thing that we would have liked to see, uh, with the DCEDC is, uh, more information on that with the narratives. But, um, still, so that would be important. And the size of the business. The DCEDC had twenty or less employees, so obviously council would want to do, you know, um, the Small Business Association, uh, recognizes, I believe, fifty or fifty-five employees. Um, but that would be up to the council in terms of kind of what size of business that you would. But that would be up to the council in terms of kind of what size of business that you would like to assist. Again, expenses, when would they have been incurred? What, what is that, that date that, that you would like to see there? And then businesses can or cannot duplicate assistance requests. Now, obviously down there at the bottom of the screen, you see that, we know that they can't duplicate requests funding from Dallas County. But what we're talking about is comfortable, is council comfortable that they've received maybe a DCEDC grant? Or they receive the PPP assistance or, or another type of assistance? Applicant must be currently operating their business in Duncanville. That's one thing that was important, especially to the board, is that, you know, we want to ensure that they are operating, that they haven't closed their doors, that they're a viable business. Businesses must be legally operating according to city ordinances and state law. That, that's critical. This is or is not a reimbursement grant and receipts must be provided by such, by a date. I know that there was discussion on the EDC program of whether it was a reimbursement or not, and people had different feelings about that. T and I discussed this extensively from a audit standpoint and a tracking standpoint. If, if we, in order to be able to provide the information necessary for audits, we're going to have to have some paperwork, we're going to have to have some tracking. And that's going to have to be presented upfront because there's no way, once someone receives a grant, we do not have the manpower to be able to continually trying to track down receipts and things like that from numerous businesses. So that's something to think about. Businesses cannot request, and again, I mentioned that earlier. So these lines here that, that are open, this is really where we're asking for some direction from council.
What, what I'd like to do, even for the first bullet and the grant amount and for the number of employees, I'd like to turn to Mark and Monty because of their participation with our local businesses. They've got a, they've got a pretty good feel, I think, for those particular two bullets. What did, what do you, and what do you guys feel about that, the grant amount cap? I know that Monty, when we first went through with EDC, you felt 10,000, we did go that way. And I, I think you also can help us with the number of people as employees because of your communication with, with some folks in the city already. What do y'all think?
Monty, you can go first, sir.
I'm trying to figure out what the question, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what the question is still.
Okay, the question, the two bullets, I'm looking to you and Mark for answers or just input, input, is the grant amount and the number of employees in terms of, of business because of your communication with that small council you all have put together.
Yeah, I would say for sure on the number of employees, either less than 10 or less than 20, way small.
Okay, 20?
I'd say like we, like we did before, and then you're looking for a maximum on the grant amount, a maximum?
Yes.
No? Again, you know, 10,000, you know?
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of what, that's kind of what, that's kind of what we heard a little bit as well. I heard when they, we did hear about.
That helps. That's an amount to help, I mean, I think you need, I mean, I don't know what $1,000 does for somebody, to tell you the truth, but.
That's off the, we know that, we know that's off the table, Monty. We're just looking for the cap. And, you know, I was thinking that what the input was that the EDC did at 10,000 and 20, 10,000 for the cap and 20, and 20 employees is probably good for this program as well, if y'all think it works.
I think that's probably good.
Yeah, I agree.
Mayor, I, I would like to say, just kind of recap what the numbers were that the EDC received because it kind of goes along that same lines. In terms of the number of requests, there were only, there were, there were 44 requests that, that were not, that, that were not awarded funds for various reasons, whether they weren't Duncanville businesses, they weren't operating legally, maybe just for various reasons. So it's a very small number of the total requests that we had that, that were, that were not assisted. So with this amount of money that we're talking about, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure that we could utilize this amount of money on, on that number of employees. I mean, we can try if that's the direction council wants to go. I just don't know that, that, that's an awfully large amount of money looking.
You know, Jessica, that's, that's, that's a great point. And, and I'll say that now as you, as you brought that up because if we lowered that amount from the 20 to 25 employees, and now for those businesses that has more, we really should stretch it up a little bit higher for those other, for the other types of businesses that have more employees. Maybe even up to, maybe even up to 50 employees at that point. I'm not sure how many businesses have that, that, that in our city, but at least up to 50 probably wouldn't be a bad thought because those are the ones we also want to retain as well. And the other program, we didn't hit on that because we lowered it to 25. So I do, I, I do like your, your, your thinking on that for sure. And then the other, the other portion of this is many times that you've asked if they've already received or a grant from the DCEDC, should we allow them? Because most of them, you can give us a percentage, did not, even though they may have qualified for more, unfortunately, because we were trying to balance out what we had, we, we gave them less. So I would still say if they qualified, even though they got the other grant, DCEDC grant, we should consider them in the same one, but in a different category. And you guys know I am, I've given it to say, an advertisement category. Only because I think businesses lost money, lost revenue because they were not able to advertise as well to bring business, uh, bring people into the business. And so an advertising piece will really still help. And the retrofit of the business, everyone will be able to jump on that for sure.
My feeling about that particular point is that I don't really mind them. If they receive DCEDC money, I really don't mind them coming in and asking for money from this particular funding source. Our whole point of this is to help our businesses, to help them be sustainable and get through this so that they don't shut their doors, that we can still have our commercial enterprises survive. It was a wonderful thing that EDC did, but I, I don't want to preclude a business from still needing a little more help because this is a different bucket. And so I'm, about the PPP, that's a federal bucket. So I would, I'm kind of leaning toward that you can't ask for more money for this, from this bucket because you got it from a federal bucket before. But certainly you could ask for it if you got it from an EDC grant. And, you know, going back to try and fill in some of the blanks for us all, I think, you know, 10,000 is a good number as Monty suggested for the, for the cap. And I understand what you're saying about the larger businesses for 50, I'm okay with that as well. I know we have a handful of those versus lots of smaller ones. But I'm, I'm okay with, with 10 for the cap on the grant and for 50 in terms of number of employees. And I think we're on, kind of agree that the same date of November 1st would apply here on this one as it did on the others. Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on that.
Mayor and council?
Yes.
If I could, if I could interject, I would ask you to maybe reconsider the $10,000 amount. The reason for that is that, I mean, you, first of all, as Jessica said, this would probably be easier to administer as a grant. Recognize that what the EDC did was companies could apply for amounts up to $10,000. Well, what did everybody do? They applied for $10,000. And the EDC spent a lot of time going back through that and trying to allocate as much funding out as they could to give as many people a shot at that money, and so they reduced those amounts. My suggestion would be start at a lower amount then, and maybe 5,000. You can always, again, you talked about what is the need out there? We know there is the need, there were a lot of businesses. The total amount that was requested was over $1 million.
Right.
100,000, if you put 10,000, that's 80 businesses that you can essentially help. So if you start at a smaller amount, you've got more that you can spread out, and then you can still see where you're at at that point. And again, you know, setting a limit on how much you'll disperse and leaving some in reserve. So that would be my suggestion.
You know, Kevin?
Eric Cruz has his hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I would agree with 50 for the employees, it's the 5,000, it sounds great to me. And regardless of whether they've already received assistance, I'm sure they've already used that and are probably seeking more. So that's kind of, kind of the way I feel about it. Thank you.
And we still have the, this is a reimbursement grant. And I kind of, I agree with Jessica, how do you, you've got to have receipts and prove that it was, that you were negatively affected by COVID-19. And so I don't know how else you can do that unless it's a reimbursement grant.
Eric Cooks has his hand up too.
I, I do like, Kevin, I like the, I like the comment that you just mentioned. However, one of the things, if, when we add the 50 team members, the staff members up, giving a company who has 50 employees, 10,000, is like giving a company with five, with 10 or 20, $1,000. So the EDC had a great formula of how to indicate it, who would get what. And so I think that grant amount should be able to vary based upon the, how much they have qualified for when they run the formula, which they had a great formula that they used during the whole process. So I know you have to put an amount, but the amount for, for a 50 staffing people should be higher. And so what do you do then? Is that you may, we may have to set it up to $20,000. And that would mean, just because it's 20, everybody should apply for 20. We just have to make sure they understand the formula that we use to make it work.
Again, too, recognize that the more stipulations you put into it or the more analysis that you put in as to how much a certain business gets, that's going to drive up the cost of administering it. You want to keep it simple. And then, so again, I think it should be one amount or maybe two amounts, then if you want to put two tiers, but just keep it a flat amount. They can apply for it, if they have, if they're approved, they get X dollars. But if you start making it a sliding scale or depending on their, you know, and allocating percentages and stuff, it's going to be more hard to, it's going to be harder to administer and it's going to drive up the cost of that administration.
Thank you, appreciate that.
That's, that's a good point, Kevin. I wonder if there's any way that this third-party administrator has any experience with anything like this that we could rely on to get some input from them?
We can, so what we'll do is, it, it sounds like you would like to consider maybe more than just one tier. And what we'll do is we'll work on drafting a program. And when we come back to you, that, in the meantime, we'll do that research, talk to the, to the third-party administrator and get an idea from them on how complex a program can they administer? And what is that cost? And then we can come back with, you know, some potential options for you. But it sounds like you want to do more than one, one tier. You want to do 50 employees, up to 50 employees. And so we can do that.
And you made a good point about the administrative costs, but frankly, I didn't calculate with my brain in terms of those things, but that, those are associated costs with dispersment of that money. So the less of an administrative burden, the better it's going to be in terms of being able to use that cash for dispersment rather than for expenses. Okay.
Councilmember Cooks has his hand up.
Kevin, one other thing, when you check, when you also check to see what they do on the advertisement piece, and the reason I keep, again, coming back to advertisement, because advertisement was key for those businesses to get people in the doors. And it, so they lost revenue because it was not able to advertise. And if they can prove that as well and get reimbursed, then they can re-advertise again and bring people back into their doors to, to lift the good business to lift.
Councilmember Cooks, I, I will tell you that, that they are open to whatever restrictions or requirements that you all want to put on it. So that would just be, you know, one of the qualifications, if that's the direction that you would want to go, that would just be one that we would need to list in there. So that, I mean, they, they will develop the program however you would like.
Well, not really a qualification, but an opportunity to reimburse for lost advertisement piece. So that really is a qualification, but a, but an opportunity to be reimbursed for advertisement loss that they, that they would have normally been doing anyway.
I guess I'm not following what you're saying. So you're saying there should be a reimbursement for the advertising they didn't do during COVID-19? Or they, because if they're being reimbursed for expenses that they, that it affected them, they had to spend money because of COVID-19, then I don't see how that fits. And I did talk to some business about advertising, and they said that, that wasn't. Now afterwards, when COVID-19 hit, like restaurants and stuff, they needed to be able to say, we're open, we're open. And, and because everybody assumed that they were all closed. But, but I guess I'm not following how what you're thinking is about reimbursing them for advertising they didn't do, or?
Well, just, well, here's, I'll, I'll end with this and just simply saying, if, if we found an opportunity, if someone's already doing it and practicing that, then let's, let's look at it. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you have enough there, Jessica?
Yes, I, I believe so. We will get, one thing that I didn't hear a decision on was this is or is not. I, I heard Councilwoman Jamison's comments, I, I didn't hear a consensus. This would be a reimbursement grant or, or would not be a reimbursement grant?
No, I think we agree with you. If, if we don't do reimbursement, it'd be too hard to do. Is everybody else on reimbursement though?
Well, reimbursement puts a burden of accountability and responsibility on somebody. If you say you don't have to reimburse me, who knows what could happen? So this, this says, you're going to have to, you're going to have to account for it and you're going to have to reimburse me when things get better. But if you just put it out there and say, go ahead, they can provide all sorts of receipts, but not necessarily the, the sense of accountability and integrity doesn't go along with not having that reimbursement. So I think we ought to have a reimbursement.
And it always has to go back to COVID-19. They have to prove that it was because of COVID-19.
And I agree with the reimbursement as well. The main with this whole thing is we want to try to use the dollars the best way possible to help as many people as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Jessica?
Okay, yes, sir. Yes, that, then we've gotten enough information. We can put together a, a program for consideration and bring that back to you. If we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So the next steps then is just what we talked about. We'll bring back programs to council and possibly contracts to, to look at and review with appropriate organizations. Now, one thing that I would like to, to get clarification on that, that we haven't really completely ironed out is, is the council wanting to go with a straight third party for both programs? Or is the council interested at looking at a partnership between a third party and Duncanville Outreach?
I like the third party and, and like the third party and also using a Duncanville Outreach.
Whereas I like the third party exclusively.
I'm leaning toward the third party exclusively simply because I don't have that much familiarity with the accountability practices that go on in Duncanville Outreach Ministry. If they can come back and show us that, how they administer that and the documentation. If they can come back and show us that, how they administer that and the documentation is very, very strong, uh, then I don't have a problem using Duncanville Outreach Ministry as well.
I was, I am thinking about third party exclusively. My concern is that, given the level of scrutiny that's going to place, be placed on these funds, uh, my concern is that if Duncanville Outreach does not do it perfectly, and when you're dealing with federal funds, there is no level of materiality. Five dollars will, will get you socked just as hard as five thousand, five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. So I would hate to do a good thing on, on their behalf to allow them to participate. But what happens is they miss or drop the ball somewhere and then get hammered because of it.
Well, can Duncanville Outreach Ministry act as a conduit? Because they do have continuity within our community. People know that they can go there. Can people go to the Duncanville Outreach Ministry and, and DOM act as a conduit for bringing that information to our third party?
Yes, sir. And in fact, that's what we, that's what we had talked about earlier, was really having them as the face and then having the third party actually have staff trained that would be there to assist them in terms of the intake and in terms of the processing of the information. So Duncanville would, so the outreach ministries would serve as the face of it. But in all reality, it is a third party that is doing all of the processing of the paperwork and, and so forth like that. What Duncanville Outreach would be doing is once the third party approved resident X, um, then, um, they would be allocated, they would ensure that those funds would be, for instance, carried over to pay water bills or those funds were, you know, made sure that they were paid to the utilities, things like that. So yes, they could serve as our, as our face and have that connection, but actually have the responsibility in terms of the paperwork and the tracking would, would be with the third party.
The audit capability would fall to the third party and, but as I said, it's kind of a hybrid. Where Duncanville Outreach Ministry, as you're saying, I, I like the term, you know, they'd be the face of the program. That's where people go and then the information is forwarded into y'all and the third party. So the audit information would be strictly for the third party and based on the information being provided by Duncanville Outreach Ministry. I'm okay with that.
Yes, sir.
I feel pretty good about that.
And then, and then by the way, for you that don't know, I think, I know because I was, I sit on the board for community, created community council, Duncanville Outreach receives funds, federal funds from them and have to do a very similar program anyway. But I do like it that it's tied in together with the third party. That's why I said, well.
And, and I don't have anything against Duncanville Outreach per se. It's just that I would like to transfer the audit risk away from the city, away from Duncanville Outreach and as much as possible on the third party. And we, if things go south, then the first thing is pointed at the, the third party and not at us and not at Duncanville Outreach.
Patrick Harvey.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Yeah. You said it very well, Patrick. Exactly what I was thinking. That, that's the, that audit has got to be pointed at, at the third-party administrator. Got to be. So if ever you can work that relationship out, Jessica, is what we're looking for.
Okay, we can visit further with them and, and the third party and then bring back some options and some consideration for you all. And again, that would be in the July, at the July meeting is when we would be bringing that back. From that point, once council approved what your program, obviously we have a preliminary framework tonight that we'll present to you. But once council approves exactly what that, those programs are going to look like, then we would submit those to Dallas County for approval. And also that's going to, how that would look would be obviously based on what the requirements are that we find out more tomorrow about. And then if Dallas County approves the fund usage per council's direction, then we would go ahead and contract with the appropriate organizations.
Very good. Yes, thank you.
All right. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Well, we knew that this was going to take some time and it has. And we're not even done. So we're moving on to the second item on the briefings. And this is a presentation from consultants of Duncan, Sims and Stoffels on the bond improvements at Harrington Park. So was it Mr. Sims? Are you up or are you carrying this one?
Before I introduce Mr. Sims, this is Bart.
Okay, Bart.
I'd like a couple of comments regarding the timeline for the project. We're seeking, here tonight to seek council input, but prior to our procurement process, the park board did review the final design renderings you're going to see tonight at their May 26th meeting. And then our plan is to begin fall construction to have it complete by spring of '21 for our youth sports associations. So with that, I'll introduce Dennis Sims with Duncan, Sam, Stoffels. He has with him Alan McGee and Paul Friedman with McGee Architects.
Thank you, Bart. Council, we are here tonight to show you the, what we've done so far in Harrington Park. And what I'm going to go over in the first part of this is the bridge location where we're crossing Ten Mile Creek. The new parking lot, there's two new restroom concession buildings that we are adding to Harrington Park and a picnic pavilion location. And after I'm complete with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Alan McGee. He's the architect who has designed the buildings and he'll have extensive renderings on those as to what they're going to look like. And then we'll open it up for questions or you may ask him as we go. First slide that you see here is the location of the bridge crossing Ten Mile Creek. Water view edge, the park is to the left on the screen. You can see the pond. And we're connecting a trail to that to go to the bridge. The bridge crosses Ten Mile and then you can see the trail as it meanders up through to Wesley Lane. That trail is based on topography. We walked that in the field, so that is where it's basically going to go. Trying to keep it on high ground now some of the low depression areas in that area. Uh, the bridge is going to be a Corten Bridge, which is steel. And I've got a small picture of it on that same slide. I'm sure you've probably seen those in some of your other parks and parks that you've ever been in. It's kind of a brown. It looks rusted. Those are very durable pedestrian bridges. Once they're in place, they require absolutely little to no maintenance on the railings themselves. The decking can be different things, concrete or wood, and we haven't decided yet which one of those we're going to use. But that's what the bridge is basically going to look like across Ten Mile Creek. Next slide, please. This is the core area where majority of our work is going. We worked with staff to determine where the parking lot was going to go. The new buildings presented several design concepts for that. And the parking lot that we're adding is a hundred and fifty spaces with six ADA spaces that's required by regulation. We have crosswalks that go to the, cross the road to go to the southern portion of the park. And if you go up to the left of the parking lot, we are going to tuck the picnic pavilion around those existing trees so that it can give us a unique setting, more of a naturalistic approach for the picnic pavilion. Picnic pavilion is probably going to seat somewhere close to a hundred people. So we'll have picnic tables underneath that to accommodate that. So it's going to be a fairly large pavilion, probably in the range, you know, sixty feet by maybe forty feet, something like that. Not just a small pavilion, a relatively large one. If you look at the picnic pavilion area, all the way back down, you can see, if you're familiar with the existing restroom concession building, that will be closed. Whether or not we demo it and take it out or if staff wants to use it for storage, that hasn't been decided yet. But that restroom facility will be closed. In its place, across the street, you see the small dark rectangle with the plaza area around it. That will be what we're calling the new soccer restroom concession building. And we've located that there. I believe staff has worked with your leagues and they're going to remove the existing baseball field and make another soccer field there for that. So that's the location of what we're terming the new soccer restroom concession facility. Now, if you'll move over to the existing baseball complex and you can see the existing concession restroom building in the center of the complex, we are also going to demo that out, take it out of there and then rebuild another restroom concession building in its place. And you're, you're getting ready to see the renderings of, of what Alan and his staff has done to do that. That's going to be a little tricky to do. We have to take a building out of there and put another one in. And as you've been in there, that's pretty tight. So it's, it's going to have to be almost taken out in piecemeal. We can't, you know, obviously get a dozer in there and push it over. It's going to be a little bit of a challenge to get that out of there. Those are the facilities, the planning of where we're going at this point. What Mr. McGee is going to show you is the architecture. And we met fairly extensively with staff and the park board to produce these renderings. And at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Alan. Alan?
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Counsel, Mr. Mayor's staff. As Dennis said, we took, next slide, please. We took and met with the park board and with staff and the plan was derived for baseball based on the footprint of the existing building to a degree. We wanted to make sure that what we had there would still fit. And we also wanted to make sure that we were providing new amenities in a reasonable budget as well to get to this point. So what we've done is we have two new restrooms and there's a wide corridor between those or a chase system. Uh, this allows for several things, allows for our water heaters. Also, it's a heated chase so that it helps it during the colder periods of the year to keep from having to, you know, close the, the facility completely. Then we have a concession area and the concession area will, you know, accommodate most of the current things that you do with snacks, drinks, et cetera. It is a sealed concrete floor with concrete countertops. Then it has a glass opening and the glass opening is covered by a pull-down screen that would be utilized whenever the park is closed. So the next slide, please. This is the floor plan for the soccer area. As you noticed on Dennis's plan, it is more out in a, an open area. And so we had a little bit more room in that particular case to do a few more things as far as amenities and as far as how this area would be perceived. So the restroom, we have an extended chase. The restrooms have a little chicane to take, to move through the areas into that. The, the concession area is slightly larger, although very similar in, in style. And then we have a small storage area as well. So both of the buildings are very similar. The reason for that is to make sure that we maintain economy and they're very durable. They are CMU or concrete masonry unit structure with a stone veneer that will match in with some of the amenities you have throughout the rest of the city. So next slide. We always like to try to visualize what's happening and in, in speaking with the various staff and with the park board, a green type of building with a cupola or what we call it, so a cupola on the top, that is an area where for the air conditioning, we have a mini-split system, which is a real small sort of unit that has one to two tons in it. But it has to have outside air and we don't want to take place any openings on the roof. They'd attract, you know, from the aesthetics of it. And also they're not as efficient as the louvers will be. So at the top of this, we have louvers that will be on all four sides and will take in our fresh air makeup and also our exhaust air from the various areas. So it's, as the, the doors and the frames around the building will be the same type and color of the metal roof. And then the stone will have an accent of cast stone that will have what we call a water table. And that's the area that's roughly at the top of the countertop. And then we have lintels which go across the top of the openings, across the top of the doors and across the concession area to accent the stone somewhat at that point in time. The extra wall space also allows this area for tournaments, et cetera, to be able to have results, coming events, et cetera. And we also wanted to see if it was appropriate to have the Duncanville logo in that area so as, as an icon to continue the, the city's identity. Next slide, please. This is a slide for the soccer area. It's very similar. Again, that was for economy. It has the cupola at the top for the same, very same reason. And we have various places for, again, for advertising of either sponsors or coming events or tournament events. When do you play? When do I play? Where do I play? What are the fields, et cetera? So we wanted to take, we felt like those would add interest to the building as well as utility to let everyone know exactly where they're supposed to be and when they're supposed to be there. I think there's one more slide. Yes, this is a slide from a little different area, looking back from the southwest. And we're just trying to give you an overall idea. The buildings are basically square in nature. They have the same features with a stone that will make them fit in with the overall context of the park. And I wanted to, you know, make sure, as the park board expressed to us and as staff expressed to us, you have a very tight budget. And so there are some things that, that we have proposed too. One, one additional slide, please. Uh, let's see. Dennis?
Yeah, there should be one more if you just want to forward to the front where you have the structure.
There we go. Uh, we felt like that with the, with the soccer area, we're showing trees there. Currently you have minimal shading, if any at all. And we've proposed a trellis system that we've had great success with in the past in various locations with parks around the area, whether North Richmond Hills, Lewisville, Middlelothian, Cedar Hill, there's various places that we've had these and we've used them on some of our other buildings as well. Provides a nice shade structure and also provides sort of a point of arrival and a place for a little bit of rest. I know my son played soccer from the time he was four and a half until he was nineteen. I've visited just about every soccer park in the area and they're all hot. So we wanted to take, to make sure that we had some place that perhaps we could take, provide some shade. Due to the cost and the, the tight budget, this is an alternate. And it's something that you'll be able to see the separate costs. It's basically a one-source alternative that we can take to use. We looked at multiple schemes to come to this point and to stay within the budget. And we're hopeful that the alternate will be able to be within that budget so that we can take, provide the shade. If not, it's something that can easily be added at virtually any time during the course of the utilization of this building. And Dennis, I, turning back to you at this point, have any questions?
Bart, Mayor, Council, do you have any questions?
I, I just have one question for you. Those, the tables that you have there, how far apart are those tables? I'm thinking about, I don't know, social distance right now, but how far apart are those tables from each other?
Those tables were, you can put those anywhere you want. Those tables are probably fifteen to twenty feet apart. But they can be moved and placed wherever you want to place them. They're not something that's stationary. They're to show that many tables could go around the building.
Okay, so that's not, that's just part of the.
It's part of the rendering, but it shows from a scale standpoint that you can put the tables around there. It doesn't have to be the final location of, of the tables.
And then I missed it and it was just included in the pro, pro, the process. A scoreboard, Bart, is that part of this bond process as well? A scoreboard out there? A scoreboard out there at the park?
Scoreboards are not included in the bond projects.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I have something. I would just like to say it's pretty uninspiring architecture. It's just looks like everything I see everywhere in every park. And I don't know, I guess I would just like to have seen something more, you know, and it's a, and it's not cheap either. You know, the construction doesn't look to me to be cheap, but uh, this first I've got to see it, so I hadn't had time to study it, but it's not inspiring at all to me.
Can you uh do a different uh drawing for us?
Certainly, we, at one point in time, uh, we had uh some clear story windows uh that were on the facility. Uh, we also had uh various uh extensions of the building. Obviously, we had more freedom with the uh uh, the soccer uh portion of it. But at the time that we were putting this together, uh, the overriding uh concern at that particular point in time uh was the the fact that uh the budget, that the budget was the budget, period. Uh, and we would be happy to uh, you know, obviously working through Dennis and through the park. Uh, we'd be happy to take to bring those drawings and uh something that might have a more architect tonics to it. Um, we're used to doing that. We've done it before. Uh, you know, we have uh multiple uh award winning buildings uh that we've done for various municipalities throughout the area.
I'm sorry, I called you by mistake. I'm sorry. Bye bye.
I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, uh, we would be, uh, you know, we have explored those over the last uh two or three months. And so I think that would be, um, you know, if that's something you'd like to see, that's something that we could readily do uh and bring back. The uh, anything we we do at this particular point in time because the size of it was based on uh the amount of dollars that we had. The, if we do go back to the clear stories, that would bring a lot of natural light into those spaces. Uh, and that's something that we could have uh available for you to review uh before as well.
Don't don't get me wrong, I'm not talking about the gold package or, you know.
No.
I'm just talking about being a lot more creative than just the same thing I see in Middlelothian and, you know, every place else that I've been around. So this is just the same, same old thing. So um, it's more about being creative and, you know, having to working with less, not having to increase the budget. And at these times in that we live in now, I mean, I think it's time that we, you know, I don't want to see, we built a pavilion at Lakeside for, you know, two hundred dollars a square foot. You know, for a, for a pavilion. And after thinking about it, you know, I thought, how did we build, we build whole buildings for two hundred dollars a square foot, you know? And this one's just the top on it. And so, you know, I'd just like to see some different, you know, some different stuff. I mean, these are special parks. I mean, Duncanville's park system is very special, very strategically located throughout the city. And I, I would like to see it represent more uh of that uh nature, you know, that more of that, that specialist that we've got. And so I I'm not interested in spending more money on on than what we've got, for sure.
But that is a consideration. And this is Paul uh stepping in. I think as as they've been going through the design uh parameters with each of these facilities, they've been hitting the budget and that's, I think, one key consideration. I think they can take a look at the design again. But I think that that will always be one thing that we'll keep bumping into.
Paul, we built, we built a pavilion at Lakeside for two hundred dollars a square foot. Okay, it's just a roof. So, I mean, I'm just not gonna, I'm just not going for that, you know, that it's that we can't do better with with just, it's equal money. I mean, I have to do it every day in my life in my business, so you know, I don't know why we can't do that here, be more creative, so.
Well, from a practical standpoint, Mr. McGee, if if you come back with more renderings or something like that, we're all we're asking for you to expend more money as well, aren't we?
No, sir. Uh, basically what we do is we're in for a, in for a penny, in for a pound. Uh, we've come to serve the city of Duncanville. And uh, we have, we have other schemes that we can take to uh institute in with that. Uh, and we've been uh, you know, uh, maybe uh too concerned with the budget, but it is something at the time that that we started this. And I understand uh Councilman's uh Anderson's concerns uh and and we're used to that. So uh, it is something that uh we will uh take and look at the creativity standpoint of it again uh to bring back uh what uh, what hopefully he's, he is concerned with and we'll meet those expectations. So that's something we can have to you uh, you know, here in probably a week and a half.
And sometimes less is more, you know, in architecture, you know, sometimes, you know, so anyway.
Well, I don't have, I don't have a problem with with another rendering or some other suggestions, as long as that your fees are within our allocated budget for doing what you're doing right now. So it's 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 all about budget. I understand that. Uh, so whatever creativity you can come up with and 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 stay within how much money we've got, had got allocated for your portion of this work, I'd appreciate.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Bart, or Mr. McGee, or Mr. Sims?
I'm not at this point. Unless you have other questions, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, um, seeing uh nothing. I think we've covered that one. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all hanging with us as we went through a a long process to get to you.
No problem. Glad to do it.
Okay.
Same here. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay, that's uh item two B on the agenda and we're into discussing the city council, uh, the council calendar. Uh, Mr. Hardman.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, we did have a couple of items we wanted to discuss with you tonight. Uh, so starting out uh with July. Uh, I think you have the calendars with you, but uh the July council meeting. We wanted to ask you if you want to cancel that meeting. Right now, we do not have anything that's pressing that needs to be on that agenda. So um, we recognize it's not bumping up against the Fourth of July, but it is close to that. So just wanted to ask you if you want to cancel that July seventh council meeting.
I'm open for input on this one.
Yes.
To me.
Yes. So I guess we give.
I don't have anything to put on the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so we get a long weekend there. Alright, so cancel uh the seventh.
Alright, uh, the second thing is that you have board and commission interviews scheduled for uh July twenty seventh and twenty eighth. Uh, and the city secretary is trying to advertise or setting those up, those appointments with applicants. And what we need to know is, are you wanting to do those as in-person interviews? Socially distanced, or do you want to do them as uh Zoom interviews?
To say, um, I would, the way things are going right now and what's happening in Dallas County, I think we probably ought to rely on Zoom. Be okay with me.
My, my i- is that the applicants have the same ability. So I was wondering how they would have the ability to to Zoom. I mean, I know some could have the app and and that some, but try to keep it even.
The um applicants would either, if they have Zoom, you know, the computer, they do have that capability. If not, they would need to call in over the telephone. You just want to get to see them.
I would prefer to um see the applicant. If they don't have the capabilities, then maybe when Kristen lines up with the people, we can find out if there's any pushback on doing it on Zoom. If they don't have the capabilities, then I think we need to interview them in in person.
Other, another option might be that if they don't have the capability, we could invite to City Hall into the briefing room and have a computer set up for them there with that capability.
That sounds like an excellent option. So one one way or another, council can be remote and the applicants can be either remote, it where they're at their cho- venue of choice, or they can be there at City Hall. So let's go ahead and push them towards Zoom.
In August, going to the August uh meet uh calendar, uh, we're wanting to schedule the uh budget workshop. This would be uh the budget, once the budget is um submitted. And we know that Dallas County is not going to get certified tax rolls to us by July thirty first. Uh, we are expecting to get um their best estimate or their best certified roll by August seventh. So given that, we really don't see the need to meet and don't want to meet prior to getting those numbers. Uh, so we are suggesting August thirteenth or the twentieth or the twenty fifth or a budget workshop or the twenty seventh. The probably, our preferred would be August thirteenth, trying to get it done early enough in the month, but after we get those finalized numbers.
So Richard and Tia have enough time to do it, uh, to have it ready by the thirteenth? I'm not sure you understood that.
It would. Uh, so what will happen is that the the budget will be filed. Uh, the proposed budget will be filed by the thirty first in accordance with the charter. It's going to be the best guess that we have of what our tax role is going to be, which then dictates what the tax rate will be. Uh, trying to stay under that um uh, what is it called now? The voter approved tax rate. But that calculation, we is going to be our best estimate at that calculation because we won't have the finalized numbers from the county yet. We won't get those numbers and their calculation until August seventh is what they're saying now. So what could happen is that if we miss that tax rate, uh, that voter approved tax rate, the council may need to adjust that down and and amend the budget, the proposed budget. So the budget will be pretty well done. There will just have to be some probably, maybe some, maybe some tweaks to it once that happens. But I think it, I think, ready by the thirteenth. I'm not sure if Richard and Tia's, I'm not sure if Richard is. Uh, Tia, what do you think?
Um, that, that's correct, Kevin. Um, we would get that final estimate on, or the final um certified uh numbers on August seventh. And that would, at that point, we could have everything else pretty complete and just drop those final numbers in and be ready by the thirteen.
But Tia, that's only three business days. I I know y'all are super, super whatevers over there, but is three business days really enough to pull it together for as tough as this one's going to be for us?
I do, um, of course, Richard's not, not on the call, but I do. It it is just a a point of just dropping in the number and um for the property tax, for the property taxes. So it'll just be a point of getting that number in. Um, the only other uh thing that may uh, it may hold up. I know we like to usually provide you the information um beforehand um in terms of your, the budget books. So that, um, from that perspective, that that may not happen until that actual day. Um, i- if that would be appropriate.
What actual day?
We can still provide.
Oh, on on the thirteenth, the day of, if we, if we were to have the meeting on the thir- August thirteenth, to provide the book that same day.
Yeah, because we need time, too.
Right.
So if they can do it, that'll give us time also to review it. And if we had any issues, deal with them kinda halfway.
Is, is.
I think we would still provide you the budget books once with the proposed, the filed budget. The only thing would be then at that point is that if there might be some tweaks in the numbers on the, especially on the tax rate. So, I mean, you would still have the budget books prior to the thirteenth, propose the file, the filed budget.
Is there a problem with doing it on Friday, the fourteenth? Give an extra day in there?
It depends on what you want to do. The the workshop has been, what we were, what we've done now is the evening workshops. And we would propose, if we were to start at like five o'clock, we believe we could be done uh that in one evening. So uh, if you do Friday, that's up to if you want to do it Friday evening, or if you want to do it during the day. Or if you want to do it the twentieth, that's fine also. Just notice that that right now, you're also looking at two other meetings that week, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm out on the fourteenth though. Can't do the fourteenth.
Well, I, you know, my, as I pretty well have explained, I I just want to make sure that our finance folks have adequate time to get it done and to get it to us in time so that we have adequate time to review it before we go. So um I don't know, there there's something in me that says I'm just not comfortable yet with that thirteenth to four, uh, and the thirteenth.
Do y'all want to set it for the twentieth? I think that's fine, Paul. And if you have any thoughts on that?
No, Barry, we've got to be able to look at it, talk about it, and if we need to come back, do something. And the sooner the better.
You still got you still got the twenty fifth or the twenty seventh to do it as well. If we go on the twentieth, you still
I understand.
Okay, so I'm I'm looking at the calendar. We, you know, if we do it on the twentieth, we've still got an opportunity to come back on the twenty fifth or twenty seventh as well.
You're just cutting down the oppor- time uh for the opportunity to come back.
I I think, as Kevin said before, the the goal would try to get the budget books out by the thirty first of the filing deadline. And then if we have to plug in the numbers on the property tax valuations, we would come back in and do that. So I think we'd give you something to be able to review leading up to the thirteenth. And then we just, we could, and Tia, correct me if I'm wrong, Tia, we could just provide a supplemental that would go in and and if there's a cha- dramatic change or a change at all, we could just pair that out, but.
A- absolutely, Paul. I I stand corrected on that. Um, yes, we can just provide the supple- any pages that have changed and it'll be minimal. Um, in terms of just those that affect the the um tax rate, we can provide those pages. Um, the the corrected pages for you the day of the workshop, but you will receive your book um by the thirty first of July.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, we we will have to actually file the budget with the city secretary by July thirty first. So the numbers that we filed, um, that that will be available to you at that time.
Okay, alright, so somehow or another, I wasn't picking up that we would have the books by the thirty first. And I was thinking we would have the books by like, what you were saying, it was like the twelfth and then we
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. I misspoke on that.
We will be providing the books as it's filed to council, so that you'd have uh basically almost a week and a half to be able to review that. The the expense numbers are already pretty much solid. So you're really getting talking about what the property tax number is like.
Alright, okay, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good with that then. Alright.
What time would y'all like to start at? Four or five o'clock?
Depends on what you get for dinner.
Yeah.
Subway.
Okay.
How about five, five o'clock? Okay with everybody?
Five o'clock on the thirteenth.
Is there some kind of nod going on? Cause he's, yeah, five o'clock? Yeah, okay, that's enough. Yeah, five o'clock on the thirteen.
Uh, moving on then to the next item for discussion is uh the town hall that we're showing on August twenty seventh. Uh, there was no specific topic allocated for that. But based on uh co- um um communications with the architects on the fire station, uh Greg, Greg Ramey, the public works director, has asked if we could have a town hall meeting in September for a first public uh look at uh fire station design. So we're asking you is, is the council willing to or wanting to go ahead and forego that uh August twenty seventh town hall meeting and push it on to September twenty fourth and make the fire station uh the topic of discussion.
Twenty four, twenty four, twenty four, twenty four. I'm good with that. Oh, anybody else? Twenty fourth?
I'm good.
Forego the, forego the town hall on twenty seven August and go with twenty Forego, forego the town hall on 27 August and go with 24 September for fire station town hall? Okay.
The last item then that we had for input was the, and we'll kind of get into this a little bit on the item on agenda tonight for the disaster declaration, but the governor has extended the, the governor's disaster declaration. It has also extended the waiver to the open meetings act, so there is not a requirement yet to meet in person. However, as things are opening up more, we were wanting, you know, if you have any thoughts as a council on when you may want to start meeting back in person with the proper precautions for social distancing, limiting the number of attendees and the meeting and so forth. If there's a timeframe so that we can start planning for that and getting things into place.
Kevin, my personal feeling is until we see some kind of reduction, significant material reduction in the number of new cases, I'm not prepared to give you any kind of definitive answer yet. We're still running over 300 a day, and who knows what's going to be happening throughout July? So I can't give you an answer to that. I'm more on the pessimistic side than the optimistic side on that, unfortunately, it's just the way I feel right now.
Can we go to the screen before on the calendar so we can look at it? Yeah, so we're talking about the 21st meeting, right? And.
Possibly, or if you, if y'all are thinking August or something, I mean, but yes, yeah. Yeah, that would probably be the earliest would be July 21st.
So, so you're saying do that zoom? Mayor?
Yes, that's my preference. As I said, I'm just being ultra conservative, and I know that. Open to criticism, I guess, but that's just the way I'm feeling right now.
And. I'm sorry, Mayor, I'd like to add that if we're going to do the boards and commissions interviews via Zoom, that we might as well continue with Zoom and until we make a change, be in August.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Don, I appreciate that.
I just want to say something real quick, just keep in mind that the joint meeting on the 20th, we have to do that in person though, because of the number of people.
Right, right. Well, now with even with the new tech, well, I guess the new technology that's on the agenda for tonight, that won't permit that by the 20th? No, okay, so hybrids are still out? Got it, okay.
We can move the meeting after the 21st. Move the P and Z meeting, the joint meeting.
Monday is their regular meeting, right? Is that?
But we also have them in August, and I think it's to get set up for a town hall, I believe. Maybe coming up, correct, Kevin?
Think you're looking at three more joint meetings with the P and Z, because you're going to have to go back and basically you do the first meeting that you had with them on the zoning ordinance update and start back at essentially ground zero, since it's been so much time that's expired. So I think you're looking at three joint meetings with P and Z to discuss the zoning ordinance update and provide input and direction on that. So I, I don't know if we even talked about September, but you're probably looking at July, August, September meetings. It sounds like what you're saying is as far as council meeting, you probably don't want to look at a live meeting until maybe the first meeting in August. Is that right?
That's my inclination, yeah.
We had on the calendar.
So are we suggesting that we're pushing the joint meeting on the 20th until we can meet live? Is that what?
I think it would be odd to not, I mean, to meet together and then the next night not meet. So.
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
I think we should move it.
Well, how do y'all, you know, I'm open to somebody saying, you know, Barry, we really, we're not concerned about meeting in person on the 21st. If I'm the odd man out on that, I'm okay, you know, if we need to, if y'all think we should meet in person on the 21st, I'm okay.
Not concerned.
I will let you know, I did reserve the senior center for the spacing needs and everything, the main room.
Oh, the main room, okay, yeah, that's what's going to be necessary, that's true.
I don't think that we need to meet together. I've been watching the count go up too, and unless something drastically turns around, it doesn't look good.
And that's why I'm pessimistic, that's what I'm saying. I'm just looking at those numbers, I just don't feel comfortable yet. But you got a good point, Johnette, about if we meet in person on the 20th, what's the rationale for not meeting in person on the 21st?
I think we have to move the 20th meeting, even if it's just a week or a few days.
That would put us into what, August 3rd, something like that?
August 3rd.
What does that look like, Kristen? Can you go to August?
Tracy, next slide, please.
August 3. That'd work.
Their next meeting is the 17th, though, Kristen?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I don't know, folks, I hate to complicate things, I'll do whatever the majority wants to do. I don't, I don't want to drive this thing. Well, you need some consensus here.
It's fine, the 3rd, and then we have council the next night.
Both of them, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, we'll probably meet August 4th unless it keeps getting worse.
Yeah.
And if it keeps getting worse, then we're going to have to figure something out.
Well, y'all feel about the joint P and Z on the 3rd, and then again on the 17th, that's the way it's looking right now. I see Joe nodding, yes.
Hello.
I see Joe nodding, yes. Don? Yes?
Yes, let's just get it scheduled and get it going.
All right. So joint on the 3rd and joint on the 17th, it's already scheduled, and plan on both, plan on meetings in August being in person. How's that?
I'm good, I was going to give you the September in case, if you were further September than I was going to talk, but I'm good, I'm good in August.
Well, yeah.
I mean, you just have to watch, you just have to watch what's going on.
We will, yeah, but for planning purposes, let's just, let's just scratch it in right now that we will, we will start meeting in person in August. Unless the governor does something else, who knows, we'll see. Yeah, Don, did you have your hand up or? No, okay. All right, Kristen, you got that?
I do, sir, and I will email y'all the updated schedule so y'all can put it in your phones.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else on the, on the calendar?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, the time is 8:20, we're not too far overtime.
8:20, Mayor, not 7:20. I think this is a record for a briefing session.
Yeah, I know, I said 8:20, yeah, I said, we're not too far overtime for being at 8:20, yeah. That's just who we are. So we are ready to go into our regular city council meeting. Does anybody need really like a two-minute break and get back and let's get moving, or are we just ready to go? We're ready to go, nobody's leaving, okay. All right, so the timestamp is 8:20, and 8:20 on Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, calling to order our regular Duncanville City Council meeting. And this is our regular session. And with our regular session, in accordance with the order of the office of the governor issued March 16th, 2020, since the county, city council for the city of Duncanville will conduct city council regular meetings by video conference. And this is the one that we're doing today, and this is in order to advance public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings and social distancing and effort to slow the spread of COVID-19. This is an open meeting conducted by video conference, however, there is no public access to the physical location at this time. Individuals who wanted to submit public comments were asked to do so by 4 o'clock today. And information from the city secretary informed me that we have no public comments to consider. So when we get to that point in the agenda, we will dispense with that particular item. A recording of this video will be made available to the public in accordance with the open meetings act upon written request. So I have called the meeting to order at 8:20. The audience is in a listen-only mode, and public comments, well, skip that one. Each council member must use raise your hand option in Zoom or physically raise your hand to be recognized to speak. And votes will be by roll call, as the city secretary calls his person's name, state if you're for, against, and to be voted on. As I stated, we're going to move the executive session items to the end of the city council meeting rather than doing them now. So let's see, it's time for our invocation. Let's see, Mr. Vera Cruz, would you do the invocation for us tonight, please?
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Lord, as always, I thank you for another day that wasn't promised. I thank you for the opportunity to not only serve with my fellow council members, but to serve our city and to always serve you, Lord. Lord, I ask for protection of our first responders and everyone involved in interaction with our citizens. Lord, as we have a event coming up this Friday, Lord, I pray for peace and unity and just a jointness, Lord, and just, just unifying our, ourselves and our city. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity again, in your mighty name I pray, amen.
Amen. Will you please rise and join me in pledges to our flags? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number one on our regular agenda, the mayor's report. I do have a couple of things I'd like to go over. First is the COVID count that was released by the county today. As of 11 o'clock today, 306 additional positive COVID-19 cases, eight additional deaths being reported. And it's interesting to look at the demographics of these deaths, the age ranges from 30s to the 90s. Even every single one of them had underlying serious health conditions, but we don't know what those are. But it tells us again that this pandemic, this disease is no respecter of age, that we all have to take care of ourselves, and that the more often that we comply with social distancing and wearing masks and washing our hands often is necessary. This thing is, continues to peak, and that's why I voiced my concern earlier. We just don't know where this is going, but please caution or urge all of our citizens to do their very, very best to protect themselves and to protect others. And I know that during these hot days, wearing a mask outside, even going to the store is, is uncomfortable. But strongly urge, quoting, quoting our governor, that we strongly urge and recommend all of our citizens to wear masks when they're out and about, please. Couple of other things I'd like to mention, that the Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation notified our police department that they've achieved re-recognition status for compliance with the Texas Law Enforcement Agency Best Practices Recognition Program. This is an exceptional achievement that represents the department's professionalism, training and policies that follow the best practices in law enforcement. So congratulations once again to our police department, to Chief Brown, Chief Levigney, and all of our police officers for doing an exceptional job and earning this recognition. It bodes well for our police force. Thank you very much, folks, really appreciate that. And another wonderful piece of recognition is that our finance department has been notified by the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, that for fiscal year 2019, 2020, our budget has been awarded the distinguished budget presentation award. This is, I hate to, it's commonplace. It, we, but there, you know, it's just wonderful that year by year by year, our finance department receives this kind of recognition and this award, and it's a wonderful thing. So Rich and Tia and all of our people in the finance department, thank you very much for all that you do for gaining this recognition. It's a wonderful thing. And last thing I'd like to mention, for all of our citizens that are listening, for parents and grandparents, for your kiddos and your grand kiddos, that the library is back open, and the summer reading program did start last week. So, you know, get your kids reading, get them in the library and get those books read. And we really look forward to having the summer program continued, because it's a wonderful thing. That concludes my comments on, for the mayor's report. Any council members' reports? Mr. Jameson?
I think that I would like to recognize, I think we all would, that this is the last meeting, council meeting, that our city manager, Kevin Hugman, he's retiring at the end of June. And so we want to wish him a good retirement and have all the fun and do all the things that everybody else wants to do. So we've enjoyed it, and thanks for being with us. And everybody should say goodbye, the 30th is, is last working day, so maybe you should just go bug him.
Yeah, use a clean mask, buy a clean mask and use a clean mask that day.
Clean mask, go bug him. Say goodbye.
Yeah, Don, Beckmanette?
Thank you, Mayor, as always, I always want to encourage everybody out there, it's census time, please do the census. And I agree with Johnette, let's, let's thank Kevin for outstanding job and a happy retirement.
Amen, amen. Mr. Cooks?
Yes, again, I echo Kevin, congratulations on your retirement. And I hope that we work good enough that we really, really enjoy it and wake up on a Tuesday night, that you know, I really missed it, those meetings. All right, but also want to say congratulations to the high school students of Duncanville. I believe they are graduating this Saturday, so congratulations to all the high school students in Duncanville and all over. And then it's, as the mayor just mentioned, about staying well, I think the wellness comes with exercise. And all of us, you guys, everybody sitting on these Zoom calls, I hope that you're up, getting some exercise and at least walking or riding or whatever you do to go with exercise. It'll all keep us healthy as we go along this way. I do want to report that, you know, COVID-19 has affected us with another large business in our city, and that's Luby's. The Luby's here that you heard me often talk about on 67, here in Duncanville, is closed, not reopened. So that was kind of sad news to hear that, that it was affected our Luby's here in Duncanville. But I think on a good note, I'm going to ask and call for all chefs. If you are a chef in our city, please reach out to me. I'd like to see if we can talk about developing something in our own city as chef. So if you're a chef, perhaps you're a former graduate student of Duncanville, and you were in the coronary department. and you're in the coronary department or you live here in your chef, please go reach out to me. I'd love to talk with you about what you can do in our city to help us develop our own in our city with Luby's leaving or anyone else leaving. I meet, my meet, Connect and Learn is coming up again. And the famous person this month is going to be Richard. And Richard's going to talk about how can I control my water costs? So we'll be doing that through Zoom on June the twenty-seventh from ten AM to eleven AM. And so Richard will be our guest, our guest speaker on that Zoom meeting. And you're going to miss it if you don't join. So Richard will be there on June twenty-seventh from ten to eleven fifteen. And then the last thing I want to cover is I have asked, I've asked a couple of people to join me on a Zoom call for a panel to talk about Better Together, and that's going to be a diversity and inclusion conversation with Better Together. And so we have a great diversity team. There's going to be a panelist that's going to happen on June thirtieth at seven o'clock through Zoom. And so I'm encouraging all in District Four to join me on that Zoom call with Better Together in Duncanville, diversity and inclusion. And we'll have a lot of great panelists from high school students to college students to senior people who live in our community, all talking about diversity and inclusion. And I'll ask you to please look for the information because we'll be sending that out for you to join that Zoom call. That concludes my message. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, just wanted to report to you on the local business strategy group that you asked Councilman Cooks and I to co-chair. And Councilman Vera Cruz has also been attending those two. And just report, we've had two meetings. And the first meeting, everybody showed up. The second meeting, all but one. We had thirteen. We added one on and all but one showed up. We're getting a lot of good feedback from those small business people about what they think about our city. And we'll be reporting to you pretty quickly. But I wanted the public to know out there that, you know, we're looking, this city, I believe, has a lot of talented people that we could cultivate. And we have a lot of local businesses that I think could come up. And I think that if you're interested in going into business in Duncanville and you're out there somewhere, that you should let one of us know and see, like Mark's calling for all the chefs. Let us know and see if there's a place that we can find, a small place for you to start your business here. But I think that this is going to bear that kind of fruit, this group, and I appreciate you, Mayor, appointing us to lead that group. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Any other councilmember reports? Yeah, Mr. Vera Cruz.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to echo what everyone else is saying about Mr. Hudman. I appreciate the city, a service to the country. And thank you to his wife for letting us borrow him for quite a few meetings. So blessings to you, sir, and pray everything goes well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Harvey, housekeeping. I see that you have two links open. I don't know how you did that, but I see two Councilman Harvey links open.
Really? Okay.
Kristin, do you see that, Kristin? Is there anything you can help with on that?
That would be Tracy. Can you?
Are you seeing what I'm seeing, Tracy?
I do see it, but my fear is that if I remove it, he won't be able to get back into the meeting. I'm afraid he'll remove both of his instances and then he won't actually be able to get back in.
Okay, well, okay, we'll be going to the executive council at some point. So at that point, it'll go anyway. Okay. All right, good enough. Okay, moving on to proclamations and presentations, item two on the agenda.
We actually have the city manager's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Hudman. Thank you, Kristin. My apologies.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say a few words tonight.
Sure. More than three minutes?
No, I think I timed myself. I'm okay. I'll try to be within three minutes. I do want to take a few moments to express my thoughts and my appreciation for being the city manager of Duncanville for the last five years. I've looked forward to moving on to this new chapter in my life. For many months now, it's been complicated, but everyone's life has been complicated the last several months. But as it gets closer, I do definitely have mixed feelings about it. And I know there's going to be a lot of things that I miss about Duncanville. And there will be some things that I will not miss at all. I do want to take the time to thank Mayor David Green and the council that hired me in early twenty fifteen and gave me the opportunity to be the city manager here. I was excited about the vision that they had for Duncanville, and I've enjoyed working with them and all of the subsequent city councils that have worked to move this community forward and to better the quality of life for the citizens. The emphasis on infrastructure improvements and better maintenance of our city facilities, streets, and parks, and the passage of the bond program for major improvements have all been significant achievements to move this city forward. And any of the projects that we are undertaking and will undertake are for the benefit and the betterment of Duncanville, including the Kidsville Splash Pad, new park pavilions, the restroom concession buildings, street reconstruction, and the potential changes to Main Street that can further the vision of downtown Duncanville. And I'm proud and blessed to have been a part of that. I also want to acknowledge and thank the staff in Duncanville. We have a very good team here, composed of many dedicated professionals who have excelled in their chosen fields and brought their expertise here to Duncanville. We're in the public service, and we cannot forget that service is part of that. Everyone who works for Duncanville has the best interest of the community in mind as they do their job. And that's part of being a professional and that's part of what service is all about and why we do this, to try to leave things a little better than we found them. We do this as a team with the policymakers, you, the elected officials. And only together can we truly affect progress for the citizens that we serve. I want to thank the community of Duncanville who welcomed me and my wife Susan when we first got here and have continued to offer support and encouragement to us all along the way. You cannot know how much that has meant to us, but please be assured that we are most grateful and most appreciative. We will not forget you, and Duncanville will always have a special place in our hearts. And finally, I want to thank you, Mayor Gordon, and all of the elected officials, you, council, that I have worked with in my five years in Duncanville, who have worked to make this community better. At times, it has been a struggle. At times, it's been challenging and frustrating. At times, it's been exhilarating and exciting. And sometimes it was just that warm feeling that we got the job done and did it well. But that's all part of the process. There are ups and downs. And as long as the uptimes outnumber the downtimes, then we will make progress. And that is all I ask for, and that is what I pray for, that the community of Duncanville will continue to progress and be a better community for everyone, for all of its citizens. A place that anyone can feel at home. I'm proud to say that I live in the city of champions. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
And thank you, Mr. Hudman. My personal thanks as well for teaching me, guiding me, and helping me through a very, very steep learning curve that continues today. And it's been a very great honor and privilege for me as the first time being a rookie elected official to work with such a professional as yourself and for your staff. It has helped me and sometimes it uses two-by-four on me and other times a kid glove at the same time. But that's, you know, the, there's some individuals, I can't remember the individual who wrote the book, called about a man of steel and a man of velvet. And that's you. You possess those characteristics and those attributes, being a man of steel and a man of velvet, knowing when to use each of those tools in the most appropriate manner. And congratulations to you, knowing your future plans. You got to be a Daniel Boone. You really do for what you're going to be doing to sell your home and to be running around the country in an RV for whatever. More power to you. Couldn't do that myself, ourselves, but you and Susan are a very special couple. And your contributions to our city are historic, and your legacy is profound. And thank you for all of your time, and we will have this opportunity to say goodbye in a better way in a few more days. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Kristin, am I okay to move on now?
Yes, sir, you are.
Okay. Kind of always have help. All right, we're on to item number two on the agenda. Mr. Cooks, proclamations and presentations. This is a proclamation and recognition of Juneteenth Day in two thousand twenty twenty in Duncanville. Mr. Cooks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Proclamation, this proclamation, as I read it tonight, has been read for at least over eight to ten years in our city as a proclamation. So it's a privilege in twenty twenty through all the time that we're going through now to read this proclamation for June nineteenth. And it goes as such, whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Branger arrived at Gabuson, Texas to enforce President Lincoln and, oh, man, emasculating proclamation and declared freedom for all slaves. And whereas each year thereafter, former Texas slaves and their descendants joined in celebration of freedom on June nineteenth, and the date became known as Juneteenth. And whereas across our nation, Americans continue to celebrate Juneteenth, a day to reflect upon the suffering of slavery, to remember the joyful declaration of freedom. And whereas it is a time of rejoicing with family and friends and a time for planning the future. Whereas the twenty twenty Best Southwest Juneteenth Celebration will be held June fifteenth through the nineteenth at seven PM on the City of DeSoto YouTube page as a part of a five-part web series. Now therefore, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, twenty twenty, as Juneteenth Recognition Day in Duncanville. And urge all citizens to acknowledge the importance of this day in the history of the African-American culture. This celebration now is the history of the important part of American society in aid and unifying our city and our nation as a whole. Thank you very much, and congratulations to the entire city of Duncanville as we celebrate our proclamation for Juneteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. And I do want to mention to our citizens, in case they're not aware, as stated in the proclamation, that Juneteenth is a joint collaborative celebration between the cities of Duncanville, Cedar Hill, and DeSoto. And it's a rotating sponsorship. So this year, the sponsorship is in DeSoto, and that's how we do it. So it really binds us together as three communities and puts together our strengths. I just wanted to comment on that for clarification, in case some of our citizens were not aware of that. Okay. Taking a look at our agenda. Item number three is citizens' input. We did not have any citizens' input. So as I said earlier, we will dispense with that particular item. Moving on to item number four, the consent agenda. City Secretary Miss Down, would you please read the consent agenda?
For A, consider the minutes for the June second City Council regular meeting. For B, consider a resolution supporting the submittal of a grant application to the North Central Texas Council of Governments for dedicated bike lanes on Daniel Dell Road through the Transportation Alternatives Program. For C, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of audiovisual and related equipment from Digital Resources, Inc. through buyboard contract number five seven five dash one eight in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-four cents. For D, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of a project-specific agreement for roadway striping for type B and type E roadway with Dallas County pursuant to the Dallas County Master Road and Bridge Interlocal Maintenance Agreement in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. For E, consider a resolution adopting the Dallas County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan as amended, twenty twenty edition. For F, consider a resolution authorizing the assignment of an agreement for purchase of petroleum products from Eagle Oil LLC to US Venture, Inc., DBA US Oil.
Thank you. Cheryl entertained a motion to approve.
To move.
Mr. Cooks approved. Mr. Mac Burnett has seconded. This is a roll call vote. City Secretary, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Mac Burnett, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for or against? I saw him say for. Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
You already asked.
All right. Councilmember Jameson, sorry, for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against? I saw him say for. Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For. Thank you. Motion is passed unanimously. Moving on to item number five, items for individual consideration. Consider amending Resolution twenty twenty dash zero two six R two extending and amending a state of emergency as a result of the COVID nineteen virus, providing for interim public safety measures, repealing all resolutions in conflict. Mr. Hudman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is to extend the disaster declaration, the state of emergency for the city of Duncanville, the mayor's orders that were previously enacted in March. The governor has extended the state declaration. And so right now, the current city declaration refers to all of the governor's orders. There are no county orders that we're operating under. This declaration would be in effect, we recommend until July twenty-first or July twenty-second so that it goes past your next scheduled meeting. But it does include wording that the declaration will expire on the effective date unless rescinded, superseded, or amended pursuant to applicable law or superseded by the governor's orders. So if the governor does lift the declaration before that time, well, then our declaration would lift. If it's amended, it can also be amended prior to that. So again, this just extends the disaster declaration, keeps things in line for our ability to apply for grants and things like that related to the pandemic.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I just wanted to add that it really coincides with the program of using the federal funds coming down from the CARES Act as well, to blend that into the, because the extension of our declaration shows that this program and the effects of COVID nineteen continue to affect our city. So this is a blending of the CARES Act funding and our declaration as well. Any comments from city council members? Seeing done, Cheryl entertained a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Mr. Mac Burnett approved. Second. Mr. Vera Cruz, second. City Secretary, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Mac Burnett, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jameson, for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For. Thank you. Motion is approved. Just a moment. Bear with me for a quick place. Okay, continuing on with what we need to do, moving executive session to the very end. So we will substitute, just defer item five B, since we haven't had executive session yet. Moving on, there is an economic development quarterly report. I didn't see that we had been provided that in advance. Is that still going to be presented, Mr. Hudman?
Mayor, I did email it to y'all, and we do have the slides.
Mayor, I did email it to y'all. And we do have the slides available if needed.
Okay, I'm sorry. My apologies. I missed that. Okay.
Any questions, Jessica's available for questions or if you wanted to present it. We, yeah, everybody's had a chance to look at it.
I'll defer on that. Any questions about it? Okay, seeing done, we'll take that as acceptance of the economic development quarterly report. Okay, so at this time, we are going back to executive session. There are three items on executive session. Just let me get my notes together here. All right, at this particular point in time, what we're going to do is recess our city council meeting and go into executive session. You need to read these executive session captions at this point. And I'll take care of that. So, executive session number one, city council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to section 551.074 Personnel Matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment due to dis discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee to wit, name and interim city manager. Item number two, city council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property to wit. Real property is generally located south of Whedon Road, east of Cedar Ridge, and west of Cockroer Hill Road. Item number three, city council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from the city attorney concerning contemplated litigation regarding a code enforcement or improper use of residential zone real property located within the city. Do want to state that Mr. Frederickson and Mr. Hudman will be coming into executive session. However, I will speak to that when we go into executive session on item number one. So, at this point, if you would please log out of our current session, go to your email and log into executive session. And the timestamp on that is 8:53. We're now all here. We are reconvening city council. The timestamp is 10:13. And in accordance with our agenda, we do have actions to be taken. Let me get to it here. We have actions to be taken as a result of executive session for item number one. City, city attorney, if you have a motion to read for item number one.
As a result of the executive session, I have prepared a motion as follows, a motion to approve an agreement with Paul Frederickson to act as interim city manager for a term to expire on or before August 31, 2020, or December 31, 2020.
December.
Yes, sir, December.
Okay, and there, make that motion.
Yes, I will, I will make that motion according to what the city attorney just read.
Okay, and there's second?
I will second that, Mayor.
All right. And action to be taken, there's no action to be taken on item number two?
Mayor, you need to vote on the motion in a second.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, roll call vote on action to be taken on item number one, please, City Secretary.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against? For. Mayor Pro Tim McBurnett, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison, for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For. Thank you. That motion is unanimously passed. Going on to executive session, item number two, there is no action to be taken on that. On executive session, item number three, there is action to be taken. City Attorney, if you read that motion, that motion language, please.
Yes. Consider a motion to authorize the office of city attorney to file a civil action to enforce zoning regulations in the city of Duncanville concerning real property located at 315 Blossom, Duncanville, Texas, to include a request for injunctive relief in all civil penalties that's been issued by law.
Do I have a motion to approve that language?
To move.
Second.
As Mr. Harvey, the second is Mr. McBurnett. Roll call vote on item number three, action to be taken. City Secretary, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against? For. Mayor Pro Tim McBurnett, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison, for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For. Thank you, Council. That vote is unanimous, that motion is unanimously accepted. And with that, our city council meeting for June 16th of 2020 is concluded. And the timestamp for adjournment is 10:17. Thank you very much for all your time and energy tonight, city council member, interim, well, Assistant City Manager Frederickson, Shelby Piercy, and Kevin Hudman, and Bob Hager for being with us throughout all of this. And for staff, Greg Grammy, Jessica, Jessica James, and for Tia and lots of people being here tonight. Get a good night's rest. Be safe. Thank you.